And welcome to our September 20th zoning hearing. Appreciate you bearing with us this morning as we are undergoing renovations. We will keep the back doors open that will help with the free flow of air. Just be of note that we are hearing a lot of noise even from the hallway up here. So just would ask that you be mindful of that if you have any conversations that you need to have, that you actually step out in that small hallway towards the restrooms or behind it so it doesn't interfere with today's meeting. Today, I'm pleased that we have Pastor Russ Masterson with Christ the Redeemer Church of Marietta. He's going to be providing our invocation and I will follow that invocation by leading us in our pledge. For those of you willing and able, please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let's pray together. Father, we come, many of us coming from a rushed morning, many of us with rushed hearts. And so we just pause before we get into some business. We pause to calm ourselves from the worries we carry, from our fears. Help us to remember that we are more than our roles and we are more than our jobs, that our beginning is being your beloved. Help us with the worries that are in our hearts to know that you love us in our mess. We are grateful for the good land that you have given us. Humble us in greater ways that we might be mindful of your lavish love, your forever welcome to us. Help us to be glad to live in your ways. Bless us as we discuss our land. Help us to have wisdom beyond our own intellects. Save us from violence and discord and confusion. Forgive us of our pride and arrogance. Forgive us for our judgment of one another and even our hate. Defend our liberties and help us to be united. Give this board and these people a wisdom beyond themselves as to speak and govern with insight and kindness. In our heartache, may we know that you always comfort and in our prosperity, may we grow even more grateful. Thank you most of all that you are enough for our busy and frantic hearts. You know us fully and in Christ, you love us fully. Thank you that while we are more imperfect than we originally thought, that in Jesus, you love us more than we dare dream. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I think it was well worth the wait and hopefully something that will stay with us, not just for today, but continue to stay with us. Thank you. With that, I'll call this meeting to order. And I will turn things over to our zoning manager to walk us through the top of the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When each case is called, we would ask that the applicant please stand up and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance. Then after that, we're going to call to see if anyone here is opposed to that specific case. We would also ask the opposition, please stand up and raise your hand so you can be counted for the record. After recognizing the applicant and the opposition, both parties will be asked to come forward to present testimony to the Board of Commissioners. Both parties will be sworn in at the front. It's important to note that each side gets 10 minutes to state their case concerns. There's not a process to reserve your time or a process to rebut the other party's comments. So please convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if there's more than one person who wishes to speak on a case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about because each side only gets 10 minutes and you don't want to cover the same information over and over. Then after both sides had their 10-minute presentation period, the board will start to discuss the matter at hand. Having the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. After that, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue with the matter at hand. Madam Chair and Board, there is one case on today's agenda and it's my understanding that the applicant is asking this case to be withdrawn without prejudice. Res zoning case Z-35 of 2022 Morrison Building and Investment LLC. It's my understanding, Madam Chair and Board, that the applicant made it known that he wanted his case to be withdrawn for today's hearing. Is the applicant present? The applicant is not here.
Okay, I'll turn it over to you, Commissioner Sheffield.
Okay, thanks, John. I've had conversations with the applicant and his desire is to withdraw and move in another direction. So with that, I make a motion that we withdraw Z-35 with prejudice and also, I'm sorry, without prejudice. And also, Madam Chair, to add a stipulation that the zoning application fee will be waived within the 12, next 12 months of filing a new zoning application.
Okay, very good. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 4-0 with Commissioner Gamble being absent.
Okay. And there are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been either held or continued by the staff of the planning commission. And these cases will not be heard today. First case is resoning case Z-7 of 2022 KM Homes. This case was held by the planning commission until the October 4th, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-7 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z-38 of 2022 David Pearson Communities Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the October 18th, 2022 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So Z-38 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z-46 of 2022 Watmore LLC. This case was continued by the planning commission until the October 4th, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-46 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z-47 of 2022 Angel Eyes Studios 5, Inc. This case was continued by the staff until the October 4th, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-47 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z-49 of 2022 Johnny Hastings Integrity Development Group. This case was held by the planning commission until the October 4th, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-49 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z-55 of 2022 Kenneth B. Clary. This case was continued by the staff until the October 4th, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-55 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z-56 of 2022 Issa Chetty. This case was continued by the staff until the October 4th, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-56 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z-57 of 2022 Aftine Food Mart, Inc. This case was continued by the planning commission until the October 4th, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-57 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z-58 of 2022 Polty Home Company. This case was held by the planning commission until the October 4th, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-58 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z-59 of 2022 Glenside Mapleton LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the October 18th, 2022 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. Excuse me, this case was held until the October 4th, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-59 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z-60 of 2022 Branch Acquisition Company LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the October 4th, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-60 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z-5 of 2022 Parallel Towers III LLC, also known as Parallel Infrastructure LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the October 4th, 2022 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So SLUP 5 will not be heard today. Resoning case, excuse, pardon me, moving into the special land use permits, SLUP 11 of 2022 Glenside Mapleton LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the October 18th, 2022 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So SLP 11 of 2022 will not be heard today. Other Business Item Number 22 of 2022 Robert A. Kerr and Rachel Kerr. This case was held by the Board of Commissioners until the October 18th, 2022 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So Other Business Item Number 22 will not be heard today. Other Business Item Number 41 of 2022 Torrelliger Papa's Multifamily Partners LLC. This case was continued by the Board of Commissioners until the October 18th, 2022 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So Other Business Item Number 41 will not be heard today. Other Business Item Number 47 of 2022 Riverside Epicenter LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the October 18th, 2022 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So Other Business Item Number 47 will not be heard today. And I need to correct one thing that I think I misspoke on. Res zoning case Z-59 of 2022 Glenside Mapleton LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the October 18th, 2022 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. Madam Chair and Board, I do have three other cases that are on the printed agenda to be heard in which the applicants are asking for continuance. First one is resoning case Z-52 of 2022 New Core 360 Capital LLC. The applicant is asking this case be continued, Madam Chair and Board, so they could continue to work on the staff comments regarding the case.
Okay, Commissioner Burrow.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to continue Z-52 and with direction to work, the applicant to work with the fire marshal on the state code and also stormwater management.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 4-0, Commissioner Gamble being absent.
Thank you. Madam Chair and Board, Other Business Item Number 44 of 2022 Brent Stepp. The staff is asking the board to continue this case for 30 days. They do have some more work to do on the plan before it's ready for the board. So the staff would ask the board to continue Other Business Item Number 44 until your October 18th hearing date.
Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you. I make a motion to continue OB 44 to the October 18th Board of Commissioners zoning hearing.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 4-0, Commissioner Gamble is absent.
Thank you. And last case I have that needs to be continued is Other Business Item Number 48 Alba Glass. This case does need to be continued for 30 days, Madam Chair and Board. They did submit a revised plan that the staff needs to take one more look at. So the staff would ask the board to continue Other Business Item Number 48 until your October 18th hearing date.
Okay, so moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion again passes 4-0 with Commissioner Gamble being absent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Before we start the hearing, I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn the volume off on your cell phone. When the phones ring, it does interfere with the broadcast and the presentation. And any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement if they made a campaign contribution of $250 or more within the last two years to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information about this requirement is located on the table in the back of this room. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing date. Any information submitted to the board after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. Madam Chair and Board, I did have three requests for early headcounts for today's hearing. First one is resoning case Z-41 of 2022 Southern Gas Partners LLC. Can I get a show of people here who are opposed to resoning case Z-41? Please stand up, raise your hands.
There's six. Six are standing.
Okay, let the record show there's six people here in opposition.
John, can you ask for who's in support when you ask for opposition? Thank you.
Can I get a show of people here who are in support of resoning case Z-41 Southern Gas Partners? Please stand up and raise your hands. Let the record show there's three people here in support. Next case is OSC 1 of 2022 Green Community Development LLC. Can I get a show of people here who are opposed to OSC number one? Please stand up and raise your hands. Let the record show there's 17 people who are opposed to OSC number one. Can I get a show of people here who are in support of OSC number one of 2022? Please stand up and raise your hands. Let the record show there's three people here in support. And I would like to remind those who stood up to oppose and support, please leave at least one person here if some of you are planning to leave for the rest of the day. And with that, Madam Chair and Board, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
And before we start the consent agenda, there's one piece of business we need to take care of regarding our rescind and reconsider case. Per the Board of Commissioners zoning hearing procedures, the July approval by the BOC for resoning case Z-43 was announced to be rescinded at today's hearing. And the case was put on hold so we could provide proper notification posting of the case. The case will be reheard by the Board of Commissioners today. So first thing we need to do is officially rescind the vote for Z-43.
Commissioner Richardson.
Motion to rescind the vote for Z-43.
All right.
Second. And discussion?
Discussion, please.
You, sir. I'm sorry. It's showing Z-43 on consent.
That's correct, so the.
So it will not, will it be heard regular?
What we're doing now is we're rescinding the vote from July, so that's on hold. And then it's going to be heard today on consent agenda as a separate matter.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? All right, I'll go ahead and call the question. The motion passes 4-0.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for September 20th, 2022. First case on consent is resoning case Z-43 of 2022 JVH Properties LLC. Request rezoning from GC to NRC for an office in Land Lot 621 of the 17th District. The property is located on the south side of South Cobb Drive, northwest of Ivy Glen Drive. The planning commissioner recommends approval of Z-43 to the NRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on May 6th, 2022, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Number two, maintain the existing 35-foot unstirred buffer adjacent to the residential zoning along the southwest property line. Number three, include an eight-foot landscape enhancement strip along Ivy Glen Drive and South Cobb Drive. Number four, fire department comments and recommendations. Number five, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Number six, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And number seven, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Is there anyone here opposed to resoning case Z-43? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Resoning case Z-54 Joshua Dover, request a rezoning from R-20 OSC to R-20 for a single family residence in land lots 710, 731, and 732 of the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Kurtz Road and on the west side of Sterling Road. The planning commission recommends approval of Z-54 to the R-20 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, fire department comments and recommendations. Number two, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Number three, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And number four, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is not here. Is there anyone here opposed to resoning case Z-54? Let the record show there's no one opposed. LUP 14 of 2022 Archbishop Gregory J. Hartmeyer, Order of the Friars Minor Conventional, Archbishop of the Archdiocese of Atlanta, as trustee of the AOA Parish Real Estate Trust, request a temporary land use permit renewal for a Catholic campus ministry in Land Lot 97 of the 20th District. The property is located on the west side of Campus Road across from Paulding Avenue. The planning commission recommends approval for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, all parking to be within the driveway or at the Kennesaw State University Park Line. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 14? Let the record show there's no one opposed. LUP 15 Rachel Jurwick, request a temporary land use permit to allow temporary occupancy of an RV in Land Lot 8 of the 17th District. The property is located on the east side of Cunningham Road, south of Shannon Way. The planning commission recommends approval of LUP 15 for 12 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, non-renewal basis. Is applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 15? Let the record show there's no one opposed. LUP 16.
John, I have a clarifying question. So for a non-renewal basis, that means the applicant can't come back and ask for a new one or she can't renew one?
That's right. The applicant did state that they just needed it for 12 months only.
Okay. Yes, that's fine. And I've seen this limited for that period. I've not seen a clause where we've not given the applicant an opportunity to renew. So that's why I've asked, because the 12 months seems to cover the fact that she desires it for 12 months.
The 12 months does cover it. Madam Chair, if the board wants to remove number one, that'd be fine with me because it seems like it would be.
It seems a bit redundant and I don't know if that would remove her due process. I mean, who are we to say that she can't come back and ask to renew? For our county attorney, can you help clarify that? It is.
I wasn't part of the negotiations with the applicant on it. I'll take a look at it and be happy to provide more comment before the consent agenda. If you can just give me a couple of moments.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next case is LUP 16 Doris Laboy.
That should be Dorcas.
Doris.
Dorcas, D-O-R-C-A-S.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Request a land use permit for a daycare in Land Lot 87 of the 17th District. Property is located on the south side of Windy Hill Road and on the west side of Favor Road. The planning commission recommends approval of LUP 16 for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on July 8th, 2022, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Number two, hours of operation to be approved by the district commissioner. Number three, austere road design guidelines must be met for any future site improvements. Number four, fire department comments and recommendations. Number five, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Number six, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. And number seven, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations, including the submission of an internal traffic circulation queuing plan for drop-off pickup periods. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 16? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Madam Chair, pardon me. May I add to the stipulations for the hours of operation? The hours of operation for the daycare ought to be 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and all staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
Okay, is the applicant comfortable with those hours that were shared? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Moving into the special land use permit on today's consent agenda, SLUP 12 East Pymont Storage LLC, request a special land use permit for a climate-controlled self-storage facility in Land Lot 565 of the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Pymont Road, east of Canton Road. The planning commission recommends approval of SLP 12, subject to all staff comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to SLUP 12? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into other business items on today's consent agenda, first item is Other Business Item Number 43 of 2022, which is to consider a stipulation and site plan amendment for Dominion Christian School regarding application, SLP 12 of 2000, for property located on the south side of Burn Hickory Road and on the east side of Old Mountain Road in land lots 272 and 273 of the 20th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to number one, proposed site plan contained in the Other Business Packet, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Number two, stormwater management comments contained in the Other Business Packet. Number three, site plan review comments contained in the Other Business Packet. Number four, fire department comments contained in the Other Business Packet. And number five, all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number 43? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other Business Item Number 46 of 2022 is to consider a stipulation amendment for Summerland Homes LLC regarding rezoning application Z-5 of 2019 for property located in land lots 1247 and 1248 of the 19th District. The property is located on the west side of Holman Road, south of Hiram Lithia Springs Road. Staff recommends approval, subject to number one, reversion clause extended to March 20th, 2023. Number two, fire department comments contained in the Other Business Packet. And number three, all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number 46? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other Business Item Number 49 of 2022 is to consider a stipulation amendment for Erolessence, Inc., regarding rezoning application Z-155 of 2004. The property is located on the north and west sides of Lake Drive, south of Jamison Road, in Land Lot 86 of the 16th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to number one, exhibit A submitted by the applicant. And number two, all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. The applicant is present. Is anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number 49?
There is one in opposition.
There is one person opposed, so we'll pull that one off consent, Madam Chair, and just hear it in its normal order.
Okay. I believe there's another modification needed to the consent agenda.
Okay. And that completes the printed consent agenda. Madam Chair, it's my understanding that one or two may be added by the.
Yes, let's go ahead and take about a three-minute recess so I can get some clarification on some things. Thank you.
...to by the applicant and they're okay with it and the opposition person has left. So we can leave that one on consent.
Did he leave?
He left.
Well, I talked to him as well.
Okay, go ahead Commissioner.
Yes, Mr. Steger was here and he wasn't opposed to the item at hand for the the traffic study which DOT has recommended that we pull or waive. Their number C in their comments, which is what the applicant is asking for. He was concerned about the odor or smell coming from here. So we are gonna, he left me his name and number and I will get in touch with Arlesence to meet with him and see what kind of controls, but that's not really what's before us. The zoning has already been approved for their expansion. This is just to waive the traffic study.
Okay.
So can we add that back to consent?
That's your motion.
Yeah, okay, I move that we add OB 49 back to consent.
Okay, I'll second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes four zero. Is there anything else that needs to be added or changed or modified on consent?
No.
No.
What are we gonna do with the one renewal up, the 12 month one? Do we get a?
Yes, John, if you can provide some additional information on the lot.
Yeah, you know, regarding the land use permit that was on consent, LEP 15, sorry. Regarding the land use permit that was on consent, that we had some questions about LEP 15 regarding the non-renewal date. Now, this is a very unusual request in that, you know, the person wants to live in an RV, but it's due to financial reasons and them trying to find a place to live. So they've agreed to only stay there for 12 months. And, you know, it's something that typically is supported by the board, but the fact that the applicant got all 15 neighbors signed off on the application and there's no one here to oppose it is one reason why the planning commission felt comfortable putting on consent that one condition on the property.
And I'll just share from my communication with legal that the applicant is not the property owner and the property owner can come back if they ever needed a lot. This is somebody who's requesting it to Tuesday on the property. The property owner wouldn't be barred. So with that commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda as revised.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes four zero. Thank you. Anyone here for consent? You are free to leave at this time. And unless your case was pulled from consent, you'll want to stay for the hearing to follow.
Okay, moving into the held and continued case agenda. First case is resoning case.
John, let's wait a second.
Okay.
Okay, John.
Thank you. Okay, resoning case Z 41 of 2022, Southern Gas Partners LLC. Request rezoning from NS and GC to NRC for convenience store or fuel sales and a car wash in Land Lot 339 of the 16th District. Property is located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Schallford Road and Tricum Road. The applicant is present and earlier there were six people here opposed to this case and three people in support. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning. My name is Jim Corson. I'm here to represent the owner. And this is Bo Patel. He is part of the group that will actually develop and operate the car wash. So he will speak to issues regarding the car wash and any other issues, of course. Just as a brief introduction, since we've been here before, this application is comprised of two tracks. The one is at the corner of Schallford and Tricum and it is an existing gas station that was built back in 1996. And today, of course, is very much outdated as far as is what it's being used for. The other, the other site is the adjacent site on Schallford Road, which is an undeveloped site and that's the site where Mr. Patel and his group will develop and operate the car wash. We were here on the 19th of July and there was opposition. So based on that, Commissioner Burl held it for 30 days. She scheduled a meeting with the homeowners, the surrounding neighbors. She was present, I was there and quite a few homeowners were there. We, the homeowners had quite a few questions and objections. We listened, we went back and reworked the site plan. We have come up with a letter of stipulations. There are 20 separate stipulations that we are agreeing to and with the full understanding that these will become conditions of rezoning if you approve the rezoning. And we've also prepared renderings for the reworked gas station, which will become the new modern convenience store and for the car wash. And we have those here today that we would show you in a moment. Just briefly, some of the changes, some of the things that we've addressed that were comments by the homeowners were we've added requirements to minimize the noise from the car wash. That was a specific concern and we will address that in detail in a moment. We have revised the car wash hours to start at a later time. We've restricted the hours of the convenience store operation from 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Previously, we were 24/7. And that was a strong point of opposition as well as from Commissioner Burl. We have agreed to add supplemental screening at the south side of the car wash next on the adjacent neighborhood side of the building for landscaping and for sound suppression. We will redesign the stormwater management concept to completely abandon the the sediment pond that was constructed on the gas station site way back in 1981 when the daycare next door was developed. It never was used by this property, but we will, we will certainly totally eliminate that. We have agreed to increase the state and county imposed stream buffers between us and the homeowners behind from the 75 feet required to a 100-foot undisturbed buffer. There would not be one single tree cut down or any disturbance whatsoever within that limit, that line of 100 feet from the rear property line of our property and of course, the common property line with the neighbors. So if we can, can we show the site plan? The, the red line that I'm talking about is, if you can see at the south end of what will be any new improvements on the car wash is a heavy red line where we say no disturbance beyond that line. And that's, that's the 100-foot undisturbed natural buffer that we are agreeing to preserve. And that's far, far exceeds any of the stream buffers that are required by the county. Also, you can see just north of that red line is the line of landscaping that the car wash people will add. These will be, I believe they are 12-foot evergreens, seven feet on center. And this is done for landscaping purposes as well as noise suppression. On the other side, the buffer that we will have between the neighbors and any improvements on the gas station is a minimum of 150 feet. And in both of these cases, zoning only requires a 30-foot rear building line. So at a minimum, you've got 100 feet next to the car wash and a minimum of 150 feet next to the, to the gas station. The buildings will be one story with a maximum of 35 feet. They will. Can we show the renderings, please, of the gas station? The gas station will, the building will retain its original footprint, its existing footprint today. And it will be revised and updated to what is commonly known today as, as a modern convenience store based on today's standards. And we have here, this is just a rendering looking from the Tricum roadside that shows what the building will look like. There's the next one, please. This is just another view. And one important thing to note, one of the things the neighbors didn't want and Commissioner Burl also didn't want was the additional two fuel pumps that we had originally proposed. They would have been in this view behind the building. They are no longer there. That's one of the items that we definitely agreed to, to remove from the site plan. This is just another view of what the new convenience store will look like. And there's one more. Another thing that the neighbors were really concerned about was the lighting from the convenience store and from the car wash. And what we have said is that we will install low-impact lighting. The building lighting will be sconces that will be on the side of the building. They will be directed in a downward position. All parking lot lighting will be low intensity and mounted in a downward position rather than in an outward position toward the street. Yeah, that's right.
Somebody talk a little bit about the car wash and show you guys what we're thinking from a conceptual point for the car wash. So just so you guys know, we, our developer also has Z 46 right now that we've held. And that was supposed to be a car wash as well on Schallford. There will not be two car washes on Schallford and Tricum. There will only be one car wash. We're holding Z 46 right now based on the result of this particular case. Once we figure that out.
Excuse me, sir, I'm sorry, your 10 minutes are up.
Oh, okay.
All right, is there anyone here in opposition?
I got a lead.
All right.
Also got petitions here from the neighbors.
Okay, you can pass them over. And just state your name for the record and then you can.
I'm Mel Skelton, 2301 Sims Drive. I'm directly behind all this.
Thank you. You can pass the documents you have over to the gentleman to your left.
Everybody, we couldn't get everybody here that was at the library because they had to work, but. And also additional people from subdivisions connected to this on both sides. They have made some changes on their plat and we've studied them as much as we could in the short time that we've had and we haven't been able to get together and have a discussion about it. There are still different concerns. Everybody knows that Schallford and Tricum is a, pretty much a dangerous intersection because of the traffic and how it folds in from multi-lanes into two lanes in three directions. And there's a lot of schoolchildren that come through there in the morning and the afternoons going to Lassiter High School, going down to Simpson Middle School. And, you know, the increased danger from people trying to get across now into a right-hand turn only into Dunkin' Donuts off of the northbound side of Tricum. There's people that come to the south side and there was almost a wreck there yesterday where someone stopped to turn in left where it's a right, you're not supposed to turn in from that direction. So that hasn't been addressed in any way. The amount of traffic and the flow getting in and out is another concern because they've added one more exit from there, but you have to go around this huge maze. If you look at, you know, the, the plans for the car wash to get in and out. And it's kind of confusing because there's like a divider and a separation and a circle and then another way to go out a different way. And they haven't made the existing turn off of the north side of that lot a one-way only out in the plat that they did. And the one coming off onto Tricum Road has not also been made a one-way only right, which means people are going to be trying to turn left into there across traffic, turning out to the left now into going north on Tricum to get back on Schallford, which that's a mess already. You can see it every morning when you go up there and look at Dunkin' Donuts where people are turning left out of there when they're only supposed to turn right. The other thing we're concerned about is that if people, if you do make it a one-way right onto Tricum, a lot of people that can't get out, they're going to come down to our neighborhood, pull in there, pull into one of the cul-de-sacs, do a turnaround and then go back out again. And so that's a big concern for us. The noise abatement does not seem sufficient for, you know, being so close to a neighborhood. And the difference between that service station site and the ones across the street is that there's no neighborhoods or close proximity to those stations. There's also the ecosystem that's there with the creek and everything. And we've discussed this the last time I was in here. When I first moved in, they cleared the lot. We disappeared with all of the animals and everything for almost 10 years, other than a few things. They're back now. What's going to happen when they clear cut almost all the way to the creek again? Now, that's a big concern. Privacy, you know, we are going to have a lot of movement in and out, both to the car wash and everything, all times of the day until into the evening, seven days a week, which is also includes Sunday. And, you know, people like to sleep in on Sundays and there's, you know, other points that we found in there, we're still worried about the lighting because, you know, down lighting still has reflection at night. When all the trees drop down, you know, how much noise abatement is there going to be from the natural trees that are there? And just a few, you know, Leland cypresses, you know, whatever height they said, 12 or 15 feet, are not going to abate all of that noise. And it's going to really reduce the quality of life, especially for us who live right along the creek right behind there. You know, and there's going to be different levels of noise coming from the automobiles themselves. There's a lot of automobiles out there that are very loud and make a lot of noise when coming in and out, plus the loud radios when, you know, the, the younger group come through to get their cars washed and everything. There have been a lot of citations issued at that corner for different things over the last two years. One of my neighbors pulled it out and I think it was somewhere between 30 and 40 citations over the two-year period, which means as much as the police are trying to police the area and make it safer, they can't be there all the time. So how much is happening in between all of those few citations been there? Wrecks happen there pretty, pretty frequently from minor to very serious. There was a very serious one that happened about a month ago there at that corner. So it's, it's, it's an ongoing thing between the additional traffic, the egress and exit from that particular lot. You know, the water management, because I went up there and took pictures of the drain yesterday and I forwarded them to Ms. Burrell. And there's still six-foot of that great drain that's stopped up. It's supposed to run down into the, underneath the culvert and be just have the water dispersed there. I don't know how they're going to fix that or how they're going to run that so that it doesn't affect us. Also, long-term maintenance of the water that's going to be used in the car wash. You know, it's great to say, yeah, right up front, we're going to do this, blah, blah, blah. They get tight on money. They don't want to do it. You know, they also, they turn it over to someone else after they get it profitable, which is a common practice in this business. And they don't have the money to do it. And so we're going to be stuck, we're going to be fighting and then all those things are going to affect the ecosystem and behind the houses and everything. So there's a number of issues that still are on the table for this whole entire thing. And since we recently just got the plat, you know, if, if, you know, there comes a thing that we're going to approve it today, then we'd like to extra time to get in touch with council ourselves and see what we can do to stop this thing. Because it's just not, I mean, it's just not viable for that particular lot and that particular area with the neighborhood so close to that particular lot. And, you know, other than that, you know, those are pretty much the major bullet points. So I hope, I hope that's acceptable. And also would you forward these to commissioners because it, it hasn't been well cared for. If you would like to give those commissioners pictures of behind the lot now where the current gas station is, all the old trash and everything has been being dumped back there and hasn't been cleaned or hasn't been taken. And all of the drains on that side, which is behind the gas station, are completely grown over and stopped up. So they're really, maintenance is a main thing. Long-term, these things do not particularly work out very well for the residents around them. So thank you for your time and I appreciate your consideration. Everybody in Heatherwood subdivisions, surrounding subdivisions that are close there really appreciate your concern in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'm going to turn things over to you, Commissioner Burl.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Did the petition circulate over here or? I'm just curious, I see the name, how many names in opposition? Okay, this, this case has been somewhat difficult, even though it is an existing gas station now. It hasn't been well maintained in the past and I think that's some of the concerns the neighbors have had as far as, you know, if, if it wasn't maintained as for the use as emissions or whatever for the last several years, will they do the right thing by this proposal? I, I heard Mr. Skelton say that they would like to obtain an attorney and well, first I'd like to call Mr. Patel and Courier back up to explain the car wash and see if there's an avenue there. There, there is a Z 46 that's in for October. That was continued for a car wash.
Correct.
And it's the same company that owns, same ownership.
Correct. If I may, dress some of the concerns that he had.
Well, I think, yeah, I think we know the concerns as far as the noise and the, the water issue, recycled water from the car wash.
Right.
But my question is, rather than develop this as two parcels, would, would you be willing to put the car wash on the Schallford side and not here and not develop this for a car wash?
In thinking of that, that's the reason why we pushed Z 46 forward to a couple more meetings is because we found out that there's actually a stream buffer that runs underneath Z 46. And that stream is going to require an excess buffer, which we may not be able to put a car wash into that site. It's going to be too tight. That being the case, this particular lot would be a lot more suitable for a car wash. Z 46 may actually create a little bit more of an issue because of the left-ins and the lefts out, left-in, left-out and the ingress egress because you're on Schallford and you've got a deceleration lane coming, but you've got also four lanes that you've got to cross over to make a left.
Okay.
The other thing, if I may, they mentioned about Tricum. In our plat, we do have a right-in, a right-out only on Tricum. A right-in, right-out on Tricum only.
Well, it's got a left-in right now, but I'm taking that out. It, it's, it's a left-in. If you're going north on Tricum, DOT is allowed a left-in, but no left-out.
In, in our.
Item 10 in the stip letter.
Item 10 in stip letter to right-in and a right-out only. Correct?
The maneuver is the existing curb cut on Schallford for the gas station is right-in, right-out. It will remain right-in, right-out. The existing curb cut on Tricum is now allowing left turn and a right turn. DOT has told us they will restrict the left turn. There will not be a left turn remover, maneuver from the gas station onto Tricum. The only full access curb cut will be the new curb cut that we're adding on Schallford down near the West Proctor Line.
Okay, I'll call DOT.
And that's covered in stipulation number 10 in the stipulation letter.
Okay. That's all I have for y'all. Amy, would you come up?
Amy Diaz, DOT.
Amy, um, okay, currently the access into the existing parcel closest to Tricum off of Schallford, is that full access now or right-in, right-out?
I believe it is right-in, right-out in the existing operation. It is definitely right-in, right-out with this rezoning case.
Okay, and then on Tricum, it's my understanding there was a left turn in going north on Tricum.
Yes.
And a right-in, right-out.
With the existing curb cut, it's full movement, but we are recommending restricting the left out because of the proximity of the signal.
Okay, so there is a left turn in.
We would allow a left in if they have stipulated it to right-in, right-out. That's also acceptable. I mean, it's more restrictive than what we've asked for.
Yeah.
But, but as long as the left out is restricted, that is what DOT's concern is for the Tricum Road driveway.
And then the additional curb cut is full access?
Yes, they make the development standard of 250 feet spacing from the signal. And so they did that specifically so they could get full access. I understand from the conversations you and I had that there's still concern because of the heavy traffic on Schallford Road. If the board wishes to restrict that access further, DOT is fine with that. You know, we'll, we'll work with it. It's between you and the developer.
Yeah, I don't, that needs to be a right-in, right-out only too. Okay, that's all I have.
Sure.
Mr. Carver.
Carl Carver, Cobb County Stormwater.
Good morning, Carl.
Good morning.
Can, can you explain what they are referring to as abandoning the detention pond that's there now and how they're now and how their stormwater runoff will, where it will go and, and what, what it will flow to, what direction and what, how that will impact the neighborhoods?
Sure, sure. The, the existing detention pond or sediment pond that was constructed in the eighties was probably just a mere sediment pond, and it's within the undisturbed buffer area, so it's going to remain undisturbed. As far as runoff from the existing gas station and the car wash, those two uses are considered hotspots according to the state's drainage manual. So the, the areas running off from those sites will go through all water separators and then water quality units to provide water quality. In addition to that, they will have to, on the car wash site, which there's no detention, they will probably, at this time, we don't have details, but they will have an underground system that the water quality units will drain through and into their underground detention system and then discharge into the stream.
And is that the same stream where?
Correct.
Heatherwood is?
Correct.
Does it have the capacity to do that?
Into the stream, sure. Yeah, they're going to detain the runoff.
Because they have issues now without an operation there and an additional car wash on, on the parcel.
They, they will restrict and, and control the runoff from the site so that there's no increase in the runoff in the stream.
Anything else you want to add?
Modifications to the existing gas station, you know, that, they mentioned the trench drain at the entrance at the Tricum roadside. All of that had to be modified and cleaned out during plan review process, and in that runoff will have to pass through water quality before it discharges into the stream.
Thank you. Mr. Skelton, would you come back up? Would you like for me to hold this for y'all to, to meet and get some of these concerns addressed, or?
Yeah, we would.
You mentioned hiring an outside attorney to represent you?
We would. I mean, as far as the additional runoff into the stream, you, I sent you pictures of what the creek looked like behind my house under just a normal summer shower, and there's also water feeding into the stream behind my house from another creek that runs beside my house, and you saw that the four-inch culvert there was full, all except for about a foot at the top during that same rain. So there's an extreme amount of water because of the development upstream from my house that runs through that culvert and into Rin Creek, and then around into mine and several other neighbors' backyards. So any additional water coming into that, that watershed system is going to make a change. I don't care what anybody says, I've seen it happen as they've developed upstream since I've lived there, I've been there 40 years. So it has changed, and the water flow is dramatically different. It's whitewater in my backyard when it rains, like a two-hour summer shower. And so I've had to bring in additional loads of dirt in my backyard with all this. I wasn't in a flood zone when I moved in. In 2008, when they did the survey, I changed to a A flood zone, and I had to bring in nine truckloads of dirt into my backyard and build the backyard up so that every time it rained a decent rain, water didn't run through my backyard and put up a, you know, and I've got the rock garden, I've had to build up two along the stream to slow down the erosion. It doesn't stop it, it just slows it down. And there's rocks back there that weigh 400 and 500 pounds that when that water gets flowing, it just pushes them downstream. So you can tell me, you know, what you would do in our position when someone says that they're going to control water into a system that's already at its max and then some.
But I think from what Mr. Carver said, it's not gonna, I mean, well, we need to have more discussions with that. And I know that at our meeting, DOT and Stormwater Management did address those, and, and they have today as well, but I think it still needs some work.
I, I think it does, too, to be honest with you, because right now, the, the land that's covered by the natural growth is absorbing a lot of runoff next to that gas station. And once you clear that off, that absorption is gone. You can put it into tanks and everything else and control the release, but when it rains really hard, that release is going to be exacerbated just like it is now upstream, and that's going to add to the problem.
Well, I, okay.
Okay.
That's all.
All right, thank you. And safety of the kids, too, you know, we're worried about all the kids that walk along there, really, a lot.
Right. Yeah, the access is another concern for me, too.
Access is bad, that applies even for more.
All right. So while I do appreciate the meetings that we've had and the concessions made by the developer to try to address the concerns of the neighbors, there's still a lot of opposition with the petition that's entered and the folks here today. So I'd like to make a motion to hold this for 30 days till the October zoning and see if we can address some issues again and, and with Stormwater and DOT and the applicant and the neighborhood. And that would be my motion.
I'll second it. Excuse me, I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is rezoning case Z-48 of 2022, OM Enterprises Nine LLC, request rezoning from LI to NRC for a convenience store or fuel sales in Land Lot 302 of the Seventeenth District. Property is located on the west side of Benson Pool Road, on the north side of Benson Pool Circle, south of South Cobb Drive. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-48? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, good morning. For the record, my name is Garvis Sams. I'm the law firm of Sams Larkin and Huff here, and Maryetta, I have the, the honor of representing, representing today OM Enterprises concerning this application for rezoning. My clients and their family are here, raise your hand. I would have opposition raise their hand, but we don't have any opposition. In fact, we, this is the third time we've been before, not you, but the Planning Commission and you, and now, and we've had no opposition throughout. We've had some inquiries from the community, and including some folks in the city of Smyrna, but they've all been satisfied and we've allayed their fears. Before I begin, I've introduced the family, we've got our engineer here today, Mr. Terry Beamer, who is seated in the, in the very back there raising his hand, so, and, and the reason he's here is simply because he and Amy Diaz over the last week have become best of friends, it seems like they talk every day, and, and congratulations to DOT for, for being as attentive as they are to this, it's been extremely helpful for us because of the, it's not major DOT situations, but just, just minor developmental interior maneuverability and, and exterior issues as well. But let me point out a few things about this. First of all, this property is zone light industrial, as best I can tell, it was zone light industrial with the comprehensive rezoning of the county back in December 26, 1972. So it's LI, it doesn't, it doesn't fit the NAC within which it is, and I think the last thing you'd want to see is someone to come in and, it's unfettered, our LI, so they could put any of the permitted uses and LIs, the second least restricted classification under your ordinance. The application is recommended for approval by your staff, the application is recommended for approval by your Planning Commission, the application or the proposed use of the property is consistent with your future land use map and comprehensive land use plan. We, we've met, revised, reviewed, revised, and submitted several iterations of the site plan, the latest of which we submitted on September the 2nd, although there've been working iterations that our engineer, Mr. Boomer, and Ms. Diaz of DOT have, have seen. So just wanted you to be aware, the inordinate amount of work that's gone into this from a, from a traffic and transportation perspective, not just over the penalty of the application for several months, but most particularly focused on since the Planning Commission zoning here. The, the property at issue, you can see here, located on the west side of Benson Pool Road, this is a 1.131 acre tract of land, as you can see, the, the salmon color, the pink color code means it's a neighborhood activity center, notwithstanding the fact that it's surrounded by multifamily. But, so your comp plan doesn't support an LI there, it, it does support the NRC, we are requesting, and that's Smyrna across the street, the totality of that. The property here, you can see in the context of development how we're being kind of closed in on by the, the city, but, but also you see the, the preponderance of multifamily that, that surrounds us. As, as a matter of fact, we've got RM 12 to our west and our north and our south, and then there's residential high-rise, and then across the street, there's Office Distribution and, and GC, and another residential high-rise in the, in the city of Smyrna. So it kind of gives you an idea of the context of development in which this property has been situated, and may explain why it's a lane idle for all these years, other than the fact that LI just simply doesn't, doesn't fit this corridor. I mean, we have the requisite contingency to the city of Smyrna, we, they do not object under their intergovernmental agreement, I mean, we're not asking for an annexation, obviously, but nevertheless, I wanted to make sure they weren't weighing in with staff, and I wasn't missing something from the city's perspective, and so we, we have not. And the city has no reservations or certainly has not weighed in in a, in a negative manner on this at all.
Excuse me, Garvis, I know, I'm sorry to interrupt you, it's just, can you help me just present this as if it's my first time seeing this application? I know you keep justifying it, but I'm asking for you to present the application.
Certainly, that's, that's, that's what I'm getting to, I'm a little, just trying to tee it up for you, Commissioner, because you haven't seen or had the benefit of this.
I just don't want all the time to run and we don't get to that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, well, I understand. This, uh, next feature here is your, your GMS map, again, showing the positioning of the property. This is the revised site plan that was filed with September 2nd stipulation letter, which you received. At that time, we also submitted not only the revised site plan, but revised imagery, elevations, and, and renderings of the property itself. This is the landscape plan that we have that comports with the site plan. This is the architectural style and composition, or at least the beginnings of it, also shows the, the various components of the architectural composition and style that's outlined below the building itself, another view of the, of the retail center with the convenience store and the fuel cells. Again, example of the architecture, which we think is stunning in view of the fact that this is an independently owned and operated facility. And what you've seen in the, in the past three years is, is a difference. We had the pleasure of representing racetrack and other prototypical developers of this type, these type of properties, and they've gone from 6,200 square feet to C-store, and they've reduced theirs. In this particular instance, our C-store component and the retail component to it are virtually the same, but in most instances, you're seeing the retail outpace the, the C-store components, simply because of the, the needs and wants in the, in the neighborhood. The stipulations that we have, this is a 7,200, 7,200 square foot building, you've seen the architectural style, which we're willing to stipulate to. The parking area will be maximally illuminated as well as security lighting, but in Ms. Sheffield, Commissioner Sheffield denied our conversation, I received some revised stipulations from her, so she would like to make sure that even though we want to maximally illuminate it for security purposes, she still would like it to be downcast, environmentally sensitive so that the lighting doesn't escape the boundaries of the properties into the apartments and the other high-rise residential structures nearby. We've submitted the landscape plan that I saw to you, and something that, that no one else does in connection with this, except me, and not that I'm special, it just seems like with, with what you hear on the news from time to time regarding convenience stores, particularly those on the other side of the river, are the safety aspects. There's only one classification that requires a submission of a safety plan, and that's the Purpose Built Student Housing Code, which Commissioner Burrell helped formulate, and that means it's a report back to the Cobb County Police Department regarding onsite manage, operational aspects, security operating parameters, parking, and property rules. It's a three-page, almost a four-page document, and it involves our monitoring, keeping impact logs and submitting those to CCPD or the District Commissioner as requested. The, the policy of time I have didn't allow me to go through the totality of this, but you've seen it or something similar to it before. So we think we're positioned in terms of differentiating ourselves from, from other convenience stores with ancillary retail, at least in terms of, of safety and the protocols that clearly define those, all the way, all the way from experienced onsite managers to project personnel and employ training program, which exceeds the one even that we have in place with respect to the, one of the big users I just mentioned whom we've had the ability to represent. It includes 24-hour emergency contacts, strategically monitored and positioned, video surveillance, both inside, outside, to the rear and the front, and it's monitored, it's not just pictures that are on a loop that no one sees, it's monitored as long as the store is open, which is from 7:00 AM until, until midnight, subject to you approving those particular hours of operation. We have appropriate access to the property by virtue of the separations that we've achieved and also by virtue of the conversations with DOT in terms of interior maneuverability and access to the property. The, the top entrance that you see there is going to be an exit only, the north is an exit only, according to DOT and consistent with conversations from the Planning Commission. The southern entrance will be entry only, again, consistent with recommendations from DOT and comments from the, the Planning Commission. The site already shows the voluntary conveyance and donation of right-of-way, and we are simply asking that this be approved as recommended by everybody who has, who has heard it, seen it, touched it, felt it, or talked about it, and concertly consistent with your policy as embodied in this future land use map. So, Madam Chairman, District Commissioner, that's our presentation at the appropriate time. My clients, our engineer, Mr. Boomer, and I can respond to any questions or address any concerns which you may have. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Stayed within my time.
Yes, sir, thank you. Commissioner, I know there was no one in opposition, I just have great sensitivity to gas stations being adjacent to residential properties, which is why I ask for you to please present the application. There are some questions that I do have that weren't addressed in your presentation that I would like to pose. What is the buffer between this gas station and the residential site?
The 20, the 20-foot buffer we show on the, on the plan.
Okay, because I know there are some standards that recommend a 300-foot distance from gas stations to residential property. In the last case we just heard, in District 3, there was 100 and 150-foot buffer that that was present there. So this looks, just visually, when I looked at the site plan in preparation for the zoning, and even from listening to you today, there's a very limited buffer between, between the site and the residential area, which provides some concerns... the residential area, which provides some concerns because there are some health aspects to the types of gases that are emitted when people are pumping gas and from the types of chemicals that are present when you have storage of underground tanks near residential property. And so that's a concern that I have with the proximity. There's also some concerns with respect to crime, and I appreciate the addition of the stipulation that you added to monitor the property. But I know when zoning other gas stations near residential property, it's often been suggested for there to be a fence between the property and the residential area.
There's a fence around the perimeter.
Okay. That's what I was looking for for your presentation.
And it's in the stipulations.
Okay. I didn't see that in the landscape plan, but it is like in two-point font, so.
Yes, ma'am. I'll start providing you guys with bigger copies when it gets time to your BOC here.
Okay. At least for the fueling pumps, I do see that it's close to the road, so it's further away from the residential property than it could be. And for the residential sites, it is pulled a little bit further away from the property where there's parking that's adjacent. So I can't estimate what that distance is, but I just have general health concerns and just general traffic and not just vehicular traffic, but pedestrian traffic concerns. It looks as if DOT has worked with you to address the traffic concerns. I think the fencing should assist with the pedestrian foot traffic. And again, I couldn't see from the landscape plan, but I'm presuming that's going to border the northwest and south of the property.
Yes, ma'am. Landscape all around, and of course, a landscape buffer along the frontage for an enhancement. Aesthetic purposes, you'll require an eight-foot, y'all call it a strip, but it really is more like a buffer the way we're going to plan it. By the way, we have actually gotten support in our dialogue with the apartment residents. There's not a lot of shopping opportunities, and this is kind of a new standard bear. It's not, people aren't going there to get gas. In fact, we voluntarily omitted some MPDs simply to make more interior room for access, not only internally and to satisfy DOT, but also so that we could accommodate. There will be pedestrians, whether they come through the property, and obviously, we've dissuaded that. But we're in a populated area because honestly, this is going to be a one-stop shopping for some people, whether we like that reality or not. It really is. We wanted to provide the most attractive and the safest. And to get to your question or your comment, we're working with British Petroleum slash Amaco on this. They'll be the user, and I haven't talked with their scientists, but I can get clarity on any potential issues you may have regarding any type of environmental circumstance.
Thank you. And just for clarification, where is the fence, Garvis?
The fence goes around northeast, south, and west.
Inside or outside of the landscaping?
On the property line.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions. I appreciate your clarity.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. One more. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for the.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you.
For Garvis?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Thank you for the clarification. It's only because I can't see it indicated here for the fencing. Is it in stipulation or somewhere else noted?
It's in the September 2 stipulation letter.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Garvis. I actually have a question for Carl.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Carl. How are you? I have a question regarding your comments as it relates to the hotspot. And for the audience that's following, it has here that the hotspot requires a fuel island and tank area fills to be drained prior to entering the proposed onsite storm drain. There is concern regarding fumes and just the issue that it is fueled. So can you just talk to us a little bit about the hotspot?
Hotspot is a term that's used by the Georgia Stormwater Management Manual for sites that have potential contaminants like oil and water. So what we require is that the areas where the fueling islands are and where they fill the underground tanks, those areas have to drain independently of the rest of the site, and they drain through an oil-water separator that the owner will have to contract with to have it pumped out regularly. It separates the oil from the water before it goes into the onsite stormwater management. That way, it is trying to prevent the oil system from getting into the stream or the downstream infrastructure. So that's kind of the definition of a hotspot.
Okay. So there is an added layer of protection, so to speak, there.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Carl?
One other quick thing. On hotspots, we do not require the runoff reduction. We require water quality devices in addition to the oil-water separator. The reason we don't require runoff reduction is we don't want the potential for contaminants to infiltrate the ground. So.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else have questions for Carl? Or for Garvis? No? Do you guys have more questions?
I guess Garvis stated that the September 2 stipulation letter stipulates a fence, and I have a September 2 stipulation letter, and I don't see that in there.
Maybe it was in the July 6 letter, but I so hereby declare that we erect a fence to the chair's delight along the northeast and west side of the property.
For the community's safety, not just for the chair's delight.
Yes, ma'am. I meant that. It must have been the July 6.
Okay. No worries. I was going to cover that, but thank you, Commissioners. Okay. So Garvis, you and I have had conversations about this type of use, and you know what my thoughts and feelings are regarding misuse. I understand that you have worked with DOT to address not just DOT's concern, but my concerns as well, which my primary concern was safety. And in one of the earlier site plans, the vehicles to the north of the property would have encumbered the crosswalk, which is always a concern. But you were able to, or your clients or your engineers were able to address those issues as well as some of the other issues that DOT had. This development will provide 7,200 square feet of retail space, but just for a point of clarification with respect to the number of islands, based on what you have here on the screen, I count 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, I count six islands.
You mean MPDs?
Pardon? Pumps, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So will it be six? Because there's another site plan that has four, and I just want to.
May I get Mr. Boomer to come up here?
Yes, please.
I apologize, but there's been so many plans, and he's so conversant with them, particularly in comparison to me. So this is Mr. Terry Boomer. He's a civil engineer, and I'll let him speak to that. I'm going to swear him into it.
Terry Boomer, Civil Consulting Engineers, 211 East Main Street, Canton, Georgia. To address your concerns over the architect, landscape architectural rendering that's up on the screen now, that was our first attempt coming through the county. After we received comments back from staff, we did not go back and revise the architectural, landscape architectural rendering that you see before you. In complying with the conditions and recommendations of staff, whether it be DOT zoning, planning, et cetera, we reduced the pump islands, mechanical pump dispensers from six that you see on the colored rendering here to four on the black and white rendering here. So there was a reduction of six to four, eliminating two, to allow for the in-only movement and out-only movement and a 50-foot uninterrupted access of those movements per DOT.
Okay. So it's four?
Four.
Okay. So that would yield a net of about eight vehicles, eight vehicles, two on each.
Correct. Correct.
All right. As it relates to the fuel cells, there's been a reduction in pumps, so we're looking at four pumps versus some of the larger areas at, will this be BP? Will this be a BP gas station? So we have four, four pumps, and I want to be careful with my words, Bill, as I always am, because, but I think that with the square footage space of retail of approximately 1,700 square feet, I think would be a trade-off for the four pumps to have the additional retail space presented to the community. Developers have shared that there has been an increase in cost and materials. There has not been this push from developers to build standalone retail, and what this property would present is 3,200 square feet of retail space outside of the convenience store. It was mentioned earlier that convenience stores are more modern now. I don't, while you'll have the same offerings as a typical convenience store, I do believe that, at least in some of the more recent stores that I've visited, it has changed on the inside. And in my community in Mableton, we have a Dollar Store, a Dollar General store, and people shop for food there. I believe that with this potential retail, it will allow an opportunity for a grocery store or a small store for people to food shop. As I look around the surrounding uses or the surrounding development in this area is surrounded by commercial, with Smyrna being to the east of the property. This property fits into the future land use, and while there is residential property, it's a multifamily community, which we would obviously still ensure that we take measures to protect with the fencing, et cetera. This one was a difficult one for me because of the fuel cells. So I was encouraged to see that the number of pumps were reduced, but the biggest thing for me is having a location for the community to shop for items and have it to be convenient to them. With this particular location, Benson Pool, it's right off South Cobb Drive. It's right off South Cobb Drive. And in this area, there isn't a neighborhood shopping area, an area where the community can drive a half-mile or quarter-mile to those neighborhood conveniences. So with that, that is part of the reason I am leaning towards approving this application, Madam Chair. Thank you. Is there a second? But no, that wasn't my motion. Because I have stipulations.
Okay. About to say, I know fence. Still haven't read that fence. I didn't see it in the July 6 letter either, so.
And this is what I love about, this is what I love about our board. We have each other's back, but I have it in my stipulations today. But thank you. Yeah, I'm not finished. I'm not finished. But this is great because we all kind of look after one another. Yeah. Did you want to add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify regarding the fence, Madam Chair and Board. It's actually in the safety plan that he handed out on the second page on the security, the last paragraph.
Thanks for the save, John.
All right. Thank you. Somebody has your back.
I knew I didn't make it up.
That was the second paragraph?
It's on the security, number two, last paragraph.
Okay.
It begins with a fence.
Is that part of the record? The document you gave us? It is part of the record, yeah. I knew it was.
And this was part of his July letter.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Mission. I see it. I see it, and I'm going to make a slight adjustment, Garvis, when we get to that point. Did you have something, Commissioner?
Can you figure anything to adjust?
I don't know what your adjustment is.
Just that, yeah, it just says the rear. Doesn't say.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Thank you, ladies. I have it. All right. And Clerk, I'll provide you with a copy of the, okay, here we go. All right, Madam Chair, I'd like to add Z-78 to the consent agenda with the following stipulations.
Just approve it. No, not add it to consent.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. To approve Z-78. This is when I was going to add it to consent. With the following stipulations. Z-48. Z-48, excuse me, everyone. It's just too much chatter. I can't, yeah, all of the, yeah, thank you. I'd like to add Z-48. I'd like to approve Z-48 with the following stipulations. That it's approved from the LI category, from LI to the NRC zoning category. Permitted uses for the 3,200 retail space shall include neighborhood uses as identified in the county code. Any other uses are to be approved by the district commissioner. DOT's recommendation number one dated September 16, 2022 was not intended to automatically grant the left-turn lane variance. Instead, DOT will retain the right to prohibit left-end movements if a needed left-turn lane cannot be installed. Lighting canopy, canopy lighting shall be mounted on or recessed into the lower surface of the canopy. Lighting shall be designed and installed to minimize or eliminate stray lighting into roadways and adjacent residential properties. The dumpster shall include doors, and the doors shall remain closed when not in use. Letters of agreeable conditions from Garvis S. Samz Jr. dated July 6, 2022, titled Stipulation Letter, Revised Site Plan, Landscape Plan, Architectural Rendering/Elevations and Safety Plan, and the Letter of Agreeable Conditions dated September 2, 2023. Landscape plan to be submitted to the county arborist with final approval by the district commissioner and to amend the OM Enterprises LLC, 9 LLC Safety Plan for fencing. That fencing shall be installed around the perimeter of the property with a six-foot vinyl clad vinyl fence, vinyl clad fence. And staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. Is there any discussion? Well, we see a follow-up application for alcohol permit here.
For the still of beer and wine. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Call a question? Motion passes 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One District Commissioner.
Okay, next case is rezoning case Z-50 of 2022, ROM USA Properties LLC, request rezoning from R-20 to NRC for a daycare in Landlaw 494, the 19th District. Property is located on the south side of Mackin Road, and on the west side of West Sandtown Road. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for Z-50? Is there anyone here for Z, is anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-50? Madam Chair and Board, the applicant is not present for this case, and I can tell you that the planning commission did recommend it be denied. So at this point, the Board can either make a decision on it, or we can continue it.
I'm going to defer to the Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me just find my notes on this one. I'm not sure what might have happened to the applicant, but, okay. Okay, so, do I need to explain or describe what this is, or just kind of move forward with our next steps?
Yes, you can determine what you want to do, if you want to hear it. If you want us to continue it because the applicant isn't here, it's up to you.
I mean, I'd like to be fair.
Yeah, typically, we do provide some consideration that something could have happened to the applicant. We'll try to reach out during the hearing.
Well, do you want to put this one on hold right now? We'll try to call them and we'll move on to the next case.
Yeah, let's do that, if not, we'll just continue. We'll try to reach out.
All right, so we'll put that one on hold right now. Okay, next case is case OSC-1 of 2022, Green Community Development LLC, request rezoning from R-20 to R-20 OSC for a single-family subdivision in Landlaw 740 to 16th District. Property is located on the east side of Kenridge Court, north of Kenridge Road. Is the applicant present? I direct to show the applicant is present, and earlier, for the early headcount, there's 18 people here opposed, and three in support. All those who would like to address the Board, please come forward to be sworn in.
My name is Christopher Hunt, personally, and also of Green Community Development. And, as you know, I've addressed the issue of not having rebuttal time, so I would like to try to be as quick as I can and leave question, consideration to you and the people that are here. And I'd like to get this over to Joan, if I can. And I'll start off with Michelle Graves.
Hey, my name is Michelle Graves, and I'm a lifelong resident of Cobb County. I'm the owner and broker of Presley Roth Real Estate. And I've been working in real estate and the industry for over 20 years. And really, my whole focus in that 20 years has been new construction, so I'm very experienced in the industry. And the product that Mr. Hunt's building is really revolutionary to Cobb County, not just Cobb County, but I think, you know, the state of Georgia. He's building a product that is, you know, not your traditional, you know, wood lumber type home, but it's like an aerated concrete-type material that is fireproof, moldproof, waterproof. And it's just, like I said, we're going to be very revolutionary, and something that we haven't seen before, particularly in a whole community. So we really appreciate the consideration that you're giving to this project, and thank you for your time.
It's okay, yeah. Do you have any questions? I think that, oh, there's a clip that I missed. Okay. Can they see what I see?
Yes, Mr. White.
Okay. Um, I'd like to share with you in appreciation that ECCA has finally given me a list. It's kind of a surprise at the last moment, but that's okay. At least I finally got a list I've been asking for for months. And I've had to pivot as a result of that to address these direct issues. And I do thank again ECCA for providing this. If we look at this site plan, you'll notice that we exceed 200% of the setback buffers. If you notice, we have addressed the incline concern, which is actually less than the existing neighborhood, and the Fire Marshal has actually said that they can give variances for that small of a deviation. So the incline is not an issue. And I have to go quickly now, because this was a surprise, but the main thing is, is that even Commissioner Burrell witnessed me address the very issues that are still here after months. They're still bringing up these topics. So I thank you that I'm able to address this ahead of time instead of having a surprise, even though this is the last minute. And you all have received by hand delivery, as well as email, the extensive forensic expert sealed solutions to all these problems. I waited until the end, hoping that ECCA would come through and say, these are it, then I could address them all. But I waited to the last minute, and everything is sealed and engineered. So these issues that they bring up, if we just go through what they're going to be presenting to you really quick, it is 13 homes. The 16 homes was complementary to the R-15. And so, that's adjoining. This is still less, at 13, is still less UPA than was already granted to the adjoining neighbors. And then, I've been very empathetic to, as they talk about the additional information, I've been very empathetic to the neighbors. And one of them brought up how he was in a lawsuit right now because a subdivision that was Cobb County-approved is flooding him, and they're going through a big battle. And I said, I've got a developer that messed us up. And I appealed to him as a fellow investor, as a developer, to get it fixed. I'm having to sue him. So that's why I put it, not only do I have forensic expert engineer 200% capacity beyond code, everything, but also, I put up a bond for $100,000 that will go for an entire year after the last home, so if there are any issues, they'll be taken care of. So I've actually gone the extra mile, and I'm solving existing problems. Why, if the ECCA is such heroes and they're trying to be so helpful to the neighbors, do they now bring up these issues? And I'm solving them for the neighbors. And I'm on my own dime, I'm saying, hey, I'm willing to do this, I can incorporate it into my water retention. So we're actually solving existing problems that weren't even my fault, and facilitating the other. Now, in regards to this, the issue is that, okay, they talk about the grade, and I just addressed that by the new design. If you look at the curve that we've got in it, and the engineered entrance and everything like that, it's fine. And the petition that they had was based on false information when they prevented me from attending the meeting. They actually forbade me to attend the meeting. And then they put out this information that I found out was false, and they got this petition. You know, they had a 30% grade. So we have to be honest, we're sworn to tell the truth here, and that's because you all have got a huge responsibility for this important county that I believe is one of the best in Georgia. And so, if we're all going to be honest and work on this thing together, we can come to a good solution. And I've been, I've had four meetings, I've gone the extra mile, and so I'm excited.
Thank you, sir. I hate to interrupt, we have five minutes left. Please present us the application, so we know what you're doing.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, the only thing we're going to be dealing with is codes that are antiquated and counterproductive. And we actually exceed these by 200%, as proven by a sealed engineer, okay? When you talk about the water, when you talk about the buffers, when you talk about everything, it is proven by what could be there. The views, there's privacy everywhere. If we were to do a standard R-20, we'd be pushed down the hill, there'd be less privacy. So I don't understand where the misinformation is coming from. And then, these are the type of views that people will be able to enjoy when they're up there. It's a spectacular sight, it's going to be kept pristine. Here is what can be done as an R-20 without OSC. That's only 35 feet. I don't think there's one neighbor here that would want to have a home 35 feet away from that property line, looking right into their homes and the other. If you'll notice, again, I've got it all pushed back up high within a 200% buffer. So when you come along here and you see this, that's what could be. That's, that's just what can be. And if you deny the OSC, I can immediately go, there's no, there's no curing process. I don't want to do this, I'm trying to be sustainable. I was a minister at Glacier National Park, I'm very, and as you are women and mothers, we need to be doing wise development. Here's the rooftop, that does not exceed any code violations at all, it doesn't need any variances on these, except this is a sample, this isn't the exact home, ours will actually be larger, but it shows you the amount of green space and everything that's involved in it. So what we have now are, there are renderings in the plans, they had front elevations, and if we look at the living rooftops and everything that's involved, the storm management, I've got, you have the engineered plans that are in the file that you all received by hand copies that were sealed, that showed 200%. And, this is, this didn't get transferred. I did have elevations in here, but somehow they didn't carry over, if you want. I don't think I'm going to have time, but I can show that if you want. And then, oh, there it is. Okay, well, it's, but that's okay. So these are the elevations that I did have provided in the original one, and so, we're actually working with Frank Betts Homes in modifying them, so that they can have a warranty in regards to fire trucks. Everything's been answered, I want to reserve time for any questions. And the honest truth is, is per the engineers, the ECCA has had it all, we actually exceed, any variance that you see, we're exceeding it. Like they're talking about, okay, he's got 10-foot driveways. Well, those are grass-paved driveways that all the Fire Marshals across the nation have supported and endorsed this product. And we have four cars across the street. Our streets are 29 feet wide, instead of what would be a net 22 with a 24 back-to-back curb. So there's, you're not going to be able to hear one objection that I have not resolved over 200% than what the code requires, it's just different. It's like saying, hey, you can't drive an EV car because you can't pass the computerized emissions thing, when actually, wise municipalities are giving single occupants in EVs the HOV lane instead of carpooling. And I'll reserve the rest of my time and consideration, and I'll see, I got a minute 25. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we go to opposition, he said he'd reserve his time.
Yeah, Mr. Hunt, we don't reserve time. If they, if they want to call you back up, they'll call you back for additional questions. So you still have a minute 18 for your presentation.
Okay, and I lost, okay, so, that'll be in the record at least, okay. As I go through here, what you, we need to see is that we've met four times. Commissioner Burrell was excellent, and when things were blowing up because of the unethical sabotaging actions of ECCA, and she intervened, we had an excellent meeting. It was an absolute excellent meeting until the very end. And then one of the ECCA members came in, knowing that library was about to close, and brought in things I couldn't address, and that's when it, and with misstatements that are still in here. And that would upset neighbors. I understand the neighbors were upset, and they could have concerns having been given misinformation. And so, in closing, what I do want to say is that I am willing to do a motion to hold, because I think if the neighbors get the information, separate from the ECCA, that shows, look, I've been trying to share with you the truth, that if you do a standard R-20, you're going to lose your buffer down to 35. We've complied with everything. I'm trying to do something sustainable that helps our future generations, helps you appreciate your property values, and even the expert real estate agent said, these are going to be fantastic homes in the development. So, Commissioner Burrell, as you gave a hold, I'm still willing to meet one more time and make sure that neighbors themselves personally get to see and have, and understand what they're getting, because this from the ECCA is 90% false. It's 90% false, and it's been false for months. They've had the information, and they're not giving it to the neighbors. So, in regards to that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now hear from opposition. And we have, at least I see, two speakers. Just be mindful of the clock runs, that there is another speaker.
And the clock is on the podium for you to be able to observe the time.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Commissioners and Madam Chairwoman. My name is Jill Flam. I'm Vice President of East Cobb Civic Association, and I will be presenting our recommendation on OSC-1. I am submitting to the Clerk a copy of our previously submitted recommendation labeled Exhibit A for the record. I have also given you each a copy of this exhibit, as well as the applicant. I am submitting as Exhibit B the petitions, with a total of 66 signatures, signed by the neighbors of Sandy Plains Estates, Piedmont Bend, Glenwood Ridge, and Cambridge Parks, Parks subdivisions opposing this application. As the only thing that has changed on the applicant's site plan since the application was submitted, is that the number of homes has been reduced from 16 to 13, and the applicant has not taken any of the recommendations of staff. These are major concerns with the neighbors, and therefore, we believe that these petitions are valid. Finally, I am submitting as Exhibit C, copies of emails that have been sent to us by the applicant that reference ECCA. It is unfortunate that the applicant has chosen to conduct himself in this manner during the rezoning process. As we have not seen any of the site plan that he put up on the screen, nor have we received a copy of what he has given to you, our recommendation is based on what was submitted to the county in a timely fashion. For reasons spelled out in our recommendation, ECCA supports the Cobb County staff, as well as the neighbors, in recommending denial of this application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll hear from additional speakers in opposition. Sir, yes, sir, you have the opportunity to speak at this time.
Hi, I'm Gregory Castle of 2007, Kenridge Road. My partner Melissa and I have lived on Kenridge for many years, near the OSC-1 properties. Melissa's children grew up in our house. We do lots of gardening and have a close relationship with this land. The seven and a half acres of OSC-1 comprise one of the last stretches of undeveloped land in a heavily subdivided area, and I care about that for many regionally important reasons. But my purpose here is to share concerns repeatedly voiced by many residents who have, for a variety of reasons, chosen not to speak today. This summer, I participated in three well-attended community meetings regarding OSC-1. The developer was at two of those meetings. The last one on August 9th was, I think, the most well-attended, the most vocal, with a great deal of opposition to the proposed development. I'm not aware of a single resident supporting OSC-1. Residents, including those on Kenridge Court directly below the OSC-1 properties, have voiced many concerns about construction, aesthetics, topography, stormwater, traffic, and more. And, by the way, the overhead site plan shared today does not show the severe contra-lines along the left side of that plan. Some of our questions have been satisfactorily answered, but many have not. Instead, we've been repeatedly asked to believe in changing and highly questionable plans, in many cases, unenforceable plans. For example, basements 16 feet deep in a rocky ridge line, supposedly with no plans to do any blasting, but also, no, no promise not to blast. Also, we plan to concentrate much of the upper stormwater discharge into a small area near the top of the ridge. I'm not a geologist, but I'm very concerned about the idea of concentrating that stormwater atop an narrow ridge line. I have spent literally hours looking this up online and found no evidence of similar approaches anywhere. At our last community meeting, we were shown that the plan reduced to 13 houses, and I need to be careful with my words here, but I can say this. I have gotten the strong impression that we were supposed to believe that someone can and will build something like that, or worse, without any one... and will build something like that, or worse, without anyone's support. So why should we bother resisting? In my experience, that seems to have been the general theme of this proposal and the discussions. However, as you know, this proposal includes a number of variances, not just housing density. The biggest problem is that there is no suitable access. Our neighborhood has many cul-de-sacs, but they all have real roads. By contrast, this property, these two properties adjoined, share one narrow, extremely steep driveway sandwiched between two downhill properties, greatly complicating all construction, utility, and maintenance work in an area where the sole previous house burned down. Many residents have, of course, shared concerns about traffic safety. Lots of people speed on Kintridge Road. There's a sharp, steep, blind curve between our house and the OSC 1 properties with lots of foot traffic and children's bicycles. 13 new houses would complicate and concentrate the existing safety concerns. I want to close with two key facts. In 2003, the Cobb County Board denied a development proposal, V35, of four additional homes, not 13, four, on the basis of stormwater runoff and severe topography. Number two, recently, on July 5th, 2022, the Cobb County Zoning and Planning Commission recommended that OSC be denied, OSC 1. Madam Chairwoman, on, in behalf of local residents, including myself and my family, I request that you deny OSC 1, 2022, due to our severe topography, stormwater, traffic, and safety concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else desiring to speak in opposition? There's 3 minutes and 26 seconds left. Seeing none, so I see your hand raised, but the hearing portion has closed. Where we hear, it has closed. However, the Commissioner can bring you back up in her deliberation of this matter. Sir, I'm sorry, that's not appropriate. Thank you, Commissioner. That's not appropriate. People have been worse during the conversation. It might get worse. Carl, would you come up, please?
Carl Carver, Cobb County Stormwater.
Can you speak to the runoff and the impact to the surrounding R20 neighborhood?
Well, currently, the site is a ridgeline shedding off in multiple directions, almost in all directions. I haven't seen any engineering or preliminary analysis of the stormwater. So to capture the runoff, he would have to put it in vaults or holding tanks or rooftops and then discharge it somewhere on the property, which will then run down the slopes in a concentrated fashion. Or he would have to discharge it into what we call level spreaders so that it kind of spreads it out. But it, you know, that would be difficult on the side of a steep slope.
Yeah, that's very steep. And in your comments, staff has recommended denial, but I just kind of wanted to get your thoughts on, because it is an issue for the runoff.
Yeah, it's a private street, so that its stormwater facility management would be private, maintained by the HOA. We would not maintain anything within the development.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Amy.
Amy Diaz.
Hey, Amy. This is, the access to this is off of Kintridge Court, which is a dead-end cul-de-sac beyond this property line. So can you give us an idea of the traffic counts and what this one access out of the surrounding subdivision would cause for the neighborhood?
Using the rule of thumb that I've used before for single-family homes, you'd expect about 13 cars coming in and out during a peak hour, so like the PM peak hour, and 130 through the whole day. That's for 13 homes. That's.
For a two-lane, dead-end cul-de-sac?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's all I wanted to ask.
Just because it was brought up by a citizen, if they do have any limitation on site distance, that's something that would have to be addressed in plan review. Their access would have to have sufficient site distance.
Okay, so they don't meet it right now where that's?
I had not identified a concern, but the neighborhood just did. And so I wanted to assure the board that that would be something that would be dealt with during plan review.
And they have to meet the distance requirement?
Correct.
From both ways?
Correct.
I'm ready to discuss. First of all, this case has been very contentious, to say the least. There have been emails back and forth with derogatory comments. There have been accusations back and forth to staff, to ECCA, that I don't appreciate and don't tolerate. The meeting that we had at Mountain View Library, a lot of you here in opposition and in support were in attendance, and at, towards the end of the meeting, when name-calling started, I closed the meeting and walked out. So this has been handled totally inappropriately from the very beginning.
Excuse me?
Sir, that's not appropriate.
And I'm not calling you back up. I'm ready to proceed. So you can put your hand down.
Sir, again, I would ask that you continue not to do that. I have a very high tolerance to this because unfortunately, we bear with this almost every BOC meeting, but I'd still ask for you not to do that. It interrupts any positive consideration of your application. Please. Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I do not support OSC 1. It is surrounded by a platted subdivision, zoned R20. There are other variants, variances that don't meet the OSC requirements for the slopes greater than 25%. Staff has concerns with fire access and the steepness of the road. PC recommended denial, and also staff. And with that, I make a motion to deny OSC 1.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm in support of the motion. I do have a question, though, for staff. And looking at the topography of the site, it looks as if this site will not be buildable. I mean, it's currently zoned R20, and, you know, the applicant did put up a site plan that would show the full building of that site to R20. But my thought, by looking at the staff comments and the topography, that it could not even be buildable to that plan because it would be limited by the topo of the site.
And the R20 plan that he showed for a few moments during his presentation, from what I gathered, just looking at it for those few moments, that plan would not meet an R20 layout.
Is the site buildable as an R20? There are some comments in opposition that traffic would be going through the, you know, the access point between the two homes from looking at the site plan. That is the only access point. So I'm curious, are we acknowledging, in some sense, that this is not a buildable site?
No, and Madam Chair, you know, calling this not buildable is not something that I would call this, you know, because there was, there's currently a house on it, there was a house on it that burned down on the other lot, so there was two houses for a long time.
Three houses?
If they wanted to come in here and build something that met R20, they could probably get more than two houses on a property, but I doubt they can get 13 houses.
Okay. All right. Are there any other comments or questions? All right, I'll call the question. The application is denied.
Madam Chair, before we move on, we did contact the applicant for Z50, and they would like to continue that case to your next hearing.
Commissioner Sheffield, if you'd like to make a motion.
I make a motion to continue Z50 to the October 18th, for the Commissioner's zoning hearing.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes for a zero. Thank you. Yes, why don't we go ahead and take a 10-minute break? We'll come back at 11:30.
We'll come back at 11:30. Thank you. Thank you, and welcome back to our zoning hearing. John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving into the other business agenda, first item we're going to hear is other business item number 39 of 2022, which is to consider a site plan and stipulation amendment for E Rock Development LLC regarding rezoning applications, Z-35 of 2016. The property is located on the northeast side of Hickory Grove Road, west of Hickory Grove Place, in land lots 54 and 55 of the 18th District. By way of background, Madam Chair and Board, the subject property was rezoned to RE5 in 2016 for a 23-lot, single-family DTAT subdivision with a public road. The applicant would like to amend the approved site plan and stipulations to allow a private road due to a Cobb DOT stipulation that requires a 50-foot from center line of Hickory Grove Road right-of-way donation. The proposed right-of-way donation, as well as revised stormwater management requirements that caused a water quality pond to be installed, would cause the applicant to lose two lots. The applicant has agreed to pre-fund the HOA Street Maintenance Fund with $20,000, and will require money to be deposited every year by each property owner to keep this account funded. If approved, all previous conditions will remain in effect. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 39? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Please go forward.
Good morning, Board of Commissioners. I'm Jonathan Edwards. Been a resident here since 1975, and developing and building with you guys since 1984. I try and do quality developments, always have. So the first thing that I want to talk about, I think that you guys were thinking I'm trying to gain a lot in this deal, and I don't. If you look on my plat, the original plat that was zoned, there was an error. There were two lot 15s marked. There was always 23 lots. Okay? You can see that in the cul-de-sac here. All right, so it was always 23 lots. It was not 22, it was 23. I tried to send the plat back in, but it didn't make it before the zoning was heard. Okay? And the county took 25 feet of the property in the front. That was almost a little over a half acre, .63 of an acre, which in an RE5 zoning is two units. Okay? So basically, I tried to go to private roads in order to maintain my lots, okay? And it's a new plat that you guys are looking at that Frye did, also in 2020 or 2021, I don't know, Mr. Carver would probably be able to tell us better, that changed the water quality ponds. We have to have more water quality leaving our site. So this plan works the best for the water quality. It works the best for any of the builders like Trey and D.R. Horton. These guys like to build skinnier houses, deeper houses. So it gives us more backyards, it gives us more room on this plan. Just like he said, I'm willing to have the homeowners sign any of the contracts they sign, that they know this private road community. Each homeowner will have to sign an initial, okay? Also, I'm willing to put $20,000 up when I turn the community over to them, so they understand this is for new pavement of roads if it fails 25, 30 years from now. So, and like I said, I've been developing for 35 years, and I've had, y'all have not top paved one of my subdivisions, repaved one of my subdivisions. So I try and do a great job here in this Cobb County, and I hope I will continue to do so. So I know I've got plenty of time, but you guys are looking at whatever you need to look at, whatever question you have for me, please ask me.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Okay, John, I still think we have the protocol of asking for staff's opinion with respect to these.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair and Board, the staff would recommend the board approve the request, subject to applicant to pre-fund the HOA with $20,000 for future road maintenance, and this is to be done prior to the first building permit to be issued. Stormwater management comments contained in the other business packet, Cobb DOT comments contained in the other business packet, Fire Department comments contained in the other business packet, and all previous conditions not in conflict remain in effect.
Thank you, John. Commissioner?
And I would also like to add that the private roads be built to county standards.
One hundred percent.
And I'd also like to ask Amy Diaz if she concurs with staff recommendation. Yes. Okay, in that case, I make a motion to approve with the conditions of the $20,000 for future maintenance and built to county standards in conjunction with DOT.
Second. Any discussion?
I do have a question with respect to the county standards, Amy, because I know we're discussing this in our code amendment package, and I need clarification.
Yes, when we say built to county standards, we're talking from a material perspective, not necessarily dimensionally?
Well, it is dimensionally from like a width perspective. I mean, we have a lot of standards that define, you know, yes, the materials that the road can be made of, how wide does it need to be, how curb and gutter implemented, things of that nature. So when we say to county standards, really the only difference in the road that he's asking for is that it will not have 50-foot of right-of-way dedicated to the county to let it be a public road. That is the difference.
Thank you, I appreciate that clarification.
No problem.
All right, is there any other discussion? Call the question. The motion passes for a zero. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, John.
Okay, next case is other business item number 45 of 2022, which is to consider a stipulation and site plan amendment for Ostel Leased Housing Associates II, LLLP, regarding rezoning application Z-120 of 2016. The property is located in land lots 511, 512, 490, and 590 of the 18th District. It is located on the east side of Factory Shaw's Road, the north side of Riverside Parkway, formerly Six Lights Drive, the southeastern side of Cochrane Road, and the south end of Richard Lane. By way of background, Madam Chair and Board, the subject property was approved to Plan Village Commercial in 2016 for a mixed-use development. The property was zoned, subject to many conditions at the time, due to the lack of a specific site plan. The stipulations required the applicant to submit a unified development plan for the entire 50 acres to the Board of Commissioners for approval. The applicant is submitting the northern 32 acres for 201 senior rental units and cottages and 280 market apartments. Both components would contain a mixture of one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, and each would have their own clubhouse area. The building appears to be traditional in styling and range in height from three to five stories. At this point, there is no, there are no plans for the commercial development, the commercial component, which is not in conflict would remain in effect. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 45? One. Okay. Let the record show there's two people here opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please go forward.
Excuse me, John, may I ask, is there anybody else in support of this?
Okay. If you could show people here who are in support of this item, please stand and raise your hands. Let the record show there's six people here in support. All those who wish to address the board, please go forward to be sworn in.
So there is a timer on the podium, so you're able to watch the timer?
Thank you, that is extremely convenient. Good morning, Madam Chair. My name is Henri, Madam Chair and Commissioners and Staff. My name is Henri Washington, 1960 Salalite Boulevard from Duluth, Georgia, here on behalf of the applicant, Dominion Group, also known here as Ostel Leased Housing Associates. I'd like to say also at the top, I know this last seven days has been particularly difficult for county staff and police officers, and so you have been in my firm's and my family's prayers, so I want to acknowledge that. We're here on behalf of the applicant, Ostel Leased Housing Associates, to request a site approval for this particular site and stipulation change for a presentation of the Unified Development Plan. This application comes by way of the rezoning approval that was, application Z-120, approved in December 20th, 2016. At the top, I want to address one important thing. This is not removing from the spirit of that stipulation, which required a unified development plan, but it's an request to remove in terms of timing, meaning that there will be eventually commercial and medical, but this application addresses one of the three critical needs. The South Cobb Redevelopment Authority presented, conducted a market study that addressed three critical needs in this corridor. There is a food desert, it's a medical desert, and it's a housing desert. And this particular development is, provides two of those critical needs, or will provide two of those critical needs. The first is housing. This particular development has senior housing and Lytec-funded housing. I want to address something at the outset when it comes to low-income housing tax credits. There's a temptation of sorts to conflate Section 8 and to conflate affordable housing with Lytec-funded housing. The reason why this particular application requires Lytec funding or is using Lytec funding is because this particular site's topography has a 200-foot drop that requires significant infrastructure investment. And when you approve this application, it allows the applicant to go to funders and to invest three and a half million dollars in grading and infrastructure and sewage. Lytec housing has a number of different unfortunate reputational harms when you talk about low-income housing, especially given the history of this corridor and the history of this particular site. Magnolia Crossings, as we all know, was home to a number of different issues when it came to crime, when it came to drugs, when it came to violence. And the county took a deliberate and decisive step to transform this community by raising it and providing the community with an opportunity to have input with a new development. This particular site does two things. As you can see, the site will provide a spine road that goes down from Factory Shaw's, a spine road that goes down from Factory Shaw's into the senior housing, or to the multifamily housing, that'll have a clubhouse, a pool, and other amenities and a playground. This area will include some of the senior housing, that'll include a senior day-out facility that will address, that will be open to the public and managed by a nonprofit. I have some elevations that I'd love to show you. This is an example, this is an example of the courtyard, or a type of courtyard that the applicant will produce. This is an example of the type of community space that Dominion has developed. This is an example of the entry driveway, that spine road that they're going to invest millions of dollars to develop. This is an example of the retaining and retention wall. This is an example of what the pool perhaps would look like. And this is an example of what the family amenity area would, could potentially look like. And I present those things for a specific reason, because in this corridor, many of the houses and the homes that individuals live in and families lived in, I live in currently, have been built in 1970s, the early 1980s, and there hasn't been a new affordable housing development that focuses on both workforce and seniors in this particular corridor. And what approving this site would do, would provide that infrastructure for this particular site, for this particular site, but also, the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority has agreed that the proceeds from this sale would go towards a medical facility in partnership with Cobb Douglas Public Health and potentially another commercial facility. I know when we met with Commissioner Sheffield, there were number of questions about what was the remaining acreage that would be left after this particular sale. If done in partnership, if done in partnership, and I'll show you this, this is the Unified Development Plan that the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority has approved. It includes our development, but it also has future plans for a development by the South, by the, in partnership with the South Cobb, excuse me, in partnership with the Cobb Doug Public Health. And it also provides a partnership potentially for another, a future commercial development. At the crux of this matter, not the crux of this application, the goal is to approve this particular step as a first forward constructive step in this area. I want to address a couple of elephants in the room. Given the history of this site, I think that there is a legitimate concern about going backwards. The county bought this property because there were a number of different issues, and a few years later, 10 or 15 years later, you put rental units or senior housing back on the same spot that it was once removed. There's a concern about concentration of poverty. Setting aside my land use and zoning hat as an attorney, prior to this, I studied, at Morehouse College, I studied the concentration of poverty. And if you want to see poverty get worse, leave working families in homes that have deferred maintenance and are charging folks market rate. Lytec funding and Dominion as a company is a good corporate citizen that requires applicants have two and a half times the income, requires applicants to clear background track, requires applicants to be sure to adhere to community standards. They don't just talk the talk, that for the last half-century, they've worked across the country to make sure that they provide quality, affordable housing. And if you want to know what Lytec housing looks like, in some respects, it looks like someone like me, who lived in Lytec-funded housing. When I graduated from Morehouse and I was working on a campaign before the state was flooded with money and, you know, campaign staffers were paid a decent wage, Lytec housing allowed me to live into a particular place that was difficult to pay the rent, but at the same time, I had a quality home in town in Atlanta. The same can be said for folks living in this community. I know that there's a desire to I know that there's a desire to have commercial development on this site, but unfortunately, we ran into two different issues when it came to commercial. First, the folks that said they would do commercial can't use this site in part, particularly because of topography issues. They would have to make a significant investment, and they wouldn't be able to get past that investment. Second, when it came to residential homes, the two folks that I know of for sure said that in order for them to make it profitable, for them to go forth with the deal, you would have to give the land for free. And so the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority now has an applicant that's willing to pay nearly $5 million for this land and have that nearly $5 million go back into this specific property. That applicant is willing to eat $3.5 million worth of costs in order to invest in this particular site. And this is not one of those developers that is foreign to Cobb County. They're at home in Cobb County, they're at home in Georgia. And they've made the commitment that after 15 years, when they have to reapply for LIHTC funding, that money will go back into this property for rehab credits. So you don't have to worry about them buying this redevelopment and selling it. What you have here is a willing partner of the county. And so the question isn't just saying yes to housing units, senior housing or market rate LIHTC housing. The question is saying yes to the housing, to address the housing issue. It's saying yes to getting funding to address the medical issue. It's saying yes to potentially having a partner that is going to help market the commercial property by adding the infrastructure that makes it more attractive of an investment for commercial developers for the remaining seven acres. And it also says to every other developer that's in the area that's treating residents with subsatter standards that you're on notice that this is what quality affordable housing looks like. And these individuals, these working families, have a place to go and deserve to live in a quality development. And again, I'm passionate on behalf of Dominion because we know what type of developer Dominion is. Dominion isn't just working in Cobb County. They just approved a property in Greenbrier, working with H.J. Russell, where they prioritize minority women contractors, where they're giving scholarships, where they're doing back-to-school batches. And so if you have a corporate citizen in your county,
Sir.
This is the type of corporate citizen.
Sorry, your time's up.
I, without a rest, thank you.
With that, we'll hear from opposition. And I saw multiple people stand up, so just be mindful of the time, so everyone can speak.
And while they're coming up, Madam Chair, we did have one more person show up in opposition, so there's now three.
Three in opposition, okay. And was the third person sworn in to speak? Okay, so just.
Okay, we'll get him sworn in.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Denny Wilson, I'm a resident from District Four. $5 million for 32 acres, wow, that's a steal. But anyway, in December of 2016, South Cobb Redevelopment Authority came before the BLC to have the zoning for Magnolia Crossing changed from R20, RM 12 to PVC. And the zoning change was voted on and it passed. The PVC zoning was requested by the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority, so they should be held to the standards that they've set for our community. To allow them to change the zoning and present our community with a level of development much lesser than what was proposed would be a great disservice to our community. Maberton Parkway is what I consider the monocular center of Cobb County from the Atlanta side of Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. Currently on Maberton Parkway, there's a development, Hamlin Grove Town Home Community, being, being constructed starting from the 400s. Just down the street from Magnolia Crossing, there's a new construction project at Blair Bridge Park Center Point, I believe a town home starting from the 300s. Chimney Hill Town Home sit right next to Magnolia Crossing. And one of them right now is for sale for a little over $300,000. Three subdivisions down the street towards Blair Bridge, Summerland, Silverton, Winterbrook, all with homes valued over $300,000. South Forest Way and Knox Spring Town House is on the other side of the Factory Show side of Magnolia Crossing with homes valued at over $300,000. And you have Creekside at Wade Farms subdivision, our Factory Show's home, right at the, the other entrance of Magnolia Crossing, once built, valued from the $400,000. Riverside Parkway's problem is crime and the appearance of it between I-20 and Factory Shows. And I think if that could be dealt with, then I think we could get some quality commercial establishment in that area. Commissioner Sheffield has worked tirelessly to bring commercial development into our community. And she's during, she's doing a darn good job of it. I mean, we're getting a shopping center in the old Kmart shopping plaza. So why should we sell ourselves short with Magnolia Crossing when we know that that's a prime piece of property? So I ask you today, please don't vote to change that zoning because our community deserves more. And I think you guys will, you know, I think you guys will, will agree with me and you'll give us what we need. So please do not change the zoning. Thank you.
We'll hear from our next speaker.
Good morning, Madam Chair and all Board of Commissioners. I rise in support of the comments of the previous speaker. Simply to say for me, being a resident of that area since 1999, walked past that property area for many, many a day, we deserve better. It's been over eight years waiting for that area to come about. And I reject the comments I've heard earlier about other developers not being, not finding that property to be attractive. I noticed one of the deserts that was omitted by the previous speaker is that it is also a bank desert. I happen to know that a developer had presented a previous plan showing that one of the commercial buildings going in there was for a bank. And across from that bank was going to be an art gallery. There's tax money is available for banks to develop in an area like this. The previous Board of Commissioners, along with the State Senator Michael Rett, was supportive of SB 20, which was to provide special incentives for bank, bank improvement zones. This area certainly qualifies. And I simply say that we hear a lot about affordable housing, but I think the type of affordable housing, in my view, that's necessary in that area, is not by apartments, it's by rooftops. Also know that developer, previous developer submitted proposals that had letters of interest from everything from craft breweries to restaurants and so forth. So I simply say that to allow piecemeal development of a property like this, we know that God is not presenting, not making any more additional land. He's expecting us to take what he has given us and do the most with it. And we simply, simply say that this community deserves better, deserves to have the full parcel developed at one time. We waited this long, we might as well wait to, to see what really is going to make a difference. And I thank you for the time.
Mr. Murphy, would you mind just stating your name for the record?
Yes, Michael Murphy, 5715 Glanville Drive, Maplewood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Leroy Trey Hutchison. Today I stand before you on behalf of the Ostel Community Task Force. The Ostel Community Task Force, that is the area in which they currently provide voice to, specifically for this property and all the other properties around that particular area. The Ostel Community Task Force took up the following position, recommending denial of the application and the development for the following reasons. The proposals of the property requires, based on the current PVC zoning category, is missing from the site plan. Again, making sure that we have a site plan that is inclusive of all the components necessary. The second part is also, according to the survey that the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority did with the community, there were several components that was almost non-negotiable to include the retail space, to include the medical facility space, to include housing. It wasn't, not necessarily specific to more apartments in the area. And so that brings us to the next component. We looked at the current position as far as having senior housing and also multifamily housing. And it come to the conclusion that while we would be okay with the senior housing, it does bring us angst because we're talking about bringing some of the most vulnerable of our community into an area that is considered to have four different deserts. The banking desert that was just mentioned, the food desert, I forgot the rest of them, but the, the different deserts that we currently have represented in that particular area. And so to bring our most vulnerable into that area is a challenge. The multifamily housing piece is also a challenge, being that Pebblebrook High School is one of the areas that has probably more apartments that feed into it than any other high school in the area. The feeder pattern has adversely been affected because of the transancy as a result of that. And so with adding more multifamily housing to that versus, which, which increases transancy versus housing that would yield more to workforce development and workforce housing, that, that particular component is one that the community is asking not to include as far as that is concerned. Okay. I believe that is, let me make sure I have the last point. Yes, this is the last point. The last point is, we're not in opposition of Dominion. We appreciate the quality that Dominion has brought to Cobb County. With this particular property, it reminds us of a similar property not too far down the road where a developer came, built single-family housing, multifamily housing, and a senior community. That development was also supposed to have a medical facility. That medical facility never came into fruition. There's a bad taste in the mouth that a, I think a storage facility now sits in the place where the medical facility was, next to a senior community. We do not want to exacerbate our issues by settling on something that does not necessarily meet the entire needs of the community when we have such a great opportunity, even if it means we have to wait another five to seven, 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers in opposition? There is one minute left on our timer. Seeing that, I'll turn things over to you, Commissioner. Excuse me, before I do that, let me ask staff appropriately for their recommendation, and then I'll turn things over to you.
Madam Chair and Board, the staff would recommend that the Board of Commissioners hold this item until Unified Development Plan for the entire property can be considered by the Board.
Interesting. Thank you.
Interesting.
Commissioner Sheffield.
I, I believe that the applicant, which I'll have come up, is working against a deadline that will occur before.
It's not appropriate until called up, sir.
Oh, that's just called me, I apologize.
Yeah, if you would, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, she referred to you, I'm sorry. You're okay, sir, I, I thought she was just referring to you, not calling you.
No, I actually had a few questions, but.
Yes, yes ma'am, happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, sure, but with staff recommend, staff recommendation, I believe would, the next hearing would occur after your deadline?
Correct.
Is that correct? In your deadline, if you can just explain to everyone what that deadline is.
So, just for context, the DCA that provides LIHTC funding had, over the past couple of years, has had a moratorium. That application is now opened up, and I think the application closes on October 14th, I believe. And so the next county meeting, I think, is the 4th of October, I believe. And so if we, as it pass that point, whatever the case may be, the, by the time we get approval from you guys, we would, would miss that deadline.
Right, thank you. And speaking of DCA, if you would just share with us the status, I know that for the past year plus, it's been this tease of the application period is open, is closed, but if you can just talk with us a little bit about the DCA application.
So I might have one of our team members come up, who actually is an expert on the DCA application. But from what I know, given the issues with COVID and number of different funding issues, DCA has had a moving kind of window when it comes to the application and when it opens and when it closes. And so we learned, I think, over the summer that the application would close on the 14th, which means that we've had to work this plan through and be prepared to tee up an application. And that application will be pending approval of this current site plan as it is.
Okay. And can you share details regarding the selection process? And for the record, if I can just add, for the clerk, DCA is for the Department of Community Affairs.
So I don't know, far be it for me to talk about the internal selection process of the Department of Community, Community Affairs. But I do know Dominion, as a general applicant, has consistently had approvals and is working on, I think, six or seven other projects in the state now. A number of them are, are, have had or are involved DCA approval. So they're adept in that approval process.
Is there someone from Dominion that can answer those questions, just so we can have clarification?
And so Sean Reinhardt is from Dominion.
If he would, please, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, Sean, Sean Reinhardt with Dominion.
Okay, thank you, Sean, for joining us today. If you would, just provide us some details regarding the selection process for DCA.
Yes, I'm happy to. And I'll also start, you'd asked a previous question about the DCA application process. And applications have been shut down since February of 2020, and it was really due to a, a bunch of applications being submitted at once and the DCA being overwhelmed with applications and having an oversubscription of applications. And so the selection priority for applications going forward is a competitive process for 4% applications, which it had not been in the past. And so this application process, being a competitive process, means that we are going to be applying and with, with points that are scored, and the points that are scored are based off of location. They're based off of readiness to proceed. They're based off of the applicant themselves and the applicant's experience and track record with Georgia DCA, among other things.
Okay. And there are two developers for this proposed development, is that correct?
There's, there's a single developer.
Okay, and that developer would be?
It would be Dominion.
Okay, and so is the Searls Foundation no longer a part of this application? Because it's my understanding that they were going to develop the senior component of this development.
That is, that is incorrect. The Searls Foundation is a nonprofit partner that provides services.
Okay, so is, is the Searls Foundation on, listed on the DCA application?
They will be as a nonprofit partner providing services, but Dominion will be the, the owner, they will be the applicant, they'll be the developer, and they will also be the management company from the, from when we first developed the property through the 15-year period. And then when we ultimately rehab the property again, we will also continue to be the management company and owner.
Okay, so for the record, then Dominion will build and develop the senior component?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So talk a little bit about the income limits. And I understand that there are limits and requirements in the guidelines for tax credit apartments. Can you share those, those income limits?
Yes, ma'am, I can. The income limits are varied based off of the size of the household. And those income limitations right now are projected for 2023. However, the income limitations will ultimately come out when the project is completed, which will be in 2025, so we don't have that exact information right now. But it is around $42,000 for, from $42,000 to 65, or excuse me.
64.
$64,000 for a family of five.
Okay. So for our workforce development, first responders, teachers, et cetera, there is a possibility that they may be overqualified for these units?
There is a possibility that they may be overqualified. However, Ostel and the surrounding area has a median family income of roughly $49,000, according to census data. And the minimum requirements for meeting the threshold for our leasing is two and a half times rent. And so for an average resident household, which is around three, and three people for an average household size within the area, that would, that would qualify for around $42,000. But it would also go up to $52,000. And so for the median census data, it really does fit the area and location of who the constituents and residents of the area are.
Right, in the current area, but there's also this desire and this drive to also build workforce housing. It's been mentioned in, in our meetings together and even here today. So I, I was just a little concerned and curious about that. Let me see if I have any other questions for you guys while you're here. That's all I have for the applicant. Actually, there is one I have for Andre, if you don't mind. You mentioned in your presentation that there's been challenges in developing the commercial component. And I just want to ask you, and this is a question that I've asked in our meetings as well, what assurances would we have if you're challenged now and there's an issue and pushback from commercial development? And understanding that, you know, when builders or when commercial developers develop, they're looking at the area median income for disposable income to support those businesses. So if you're faced with challenges now and considering the area median income, what assurances or how do you see attracting developers to the site?
Well, there's three things that I'll point to. First, I think it wasn't, it isn't just the area median income, it's the traffic in the area, and so increasing the number of people that live there matters. Raising that median income by, through this development, so as a practical matter, new people living in those units with more potential disposable income because they're paying less per month for the housing, so they got, living in a better home, paying less for housing. Essentially, also, when you approve this deal, the nearly $5 million from the sale would allow for the infrastructure, because the other half of that is not just the individuals that are there, it's the topography of the site. How can an individual develop? So I heard someone in opposition mention all these potential plans, but until someone actually walks the site and recognizes the significant infrastructure problems, to a point, you know, normally grading is a $350,000, $400,000 expense, but it's several multiples of that in this particular site. So you get new individuals, you get infrastructure added, and then you get additional monies from this sale that will be dedicated to making the commercial site more attractive. And this, again, as of yesterday, the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority approved a resolution that the proceeds from this site, which they could spend anywhere in the county, will go right back to this particular location to advance the Unified Development Plan when it comes to a medical facility or making it more attractive for a commercial developer. So it's going to take partnership, and ultimately, these won't come online until Q3 of 2025, which means between now and then, you have new energy, new infusion of capital, new infusion of infrastructure that would be more attractive to a commercial developer.
Okay. And in what ways would you make it more attractive to the commercial developer?
Well, again, that infrastructure piece and having new rooftops, I know that, you know...
Yeah, but you said with that funding, you would use that funds to make the site more attractive to developers. So I'm asking, in what ways would you make it attractive? Are there issues with that part of the site that you would make an investment? What exactly would you do that you can't do now to make it more attractive?
Well, I believe that also to the wisdom of the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority, I don't know if Doug would like to speak to some of those things that they might do with the funding, but at a basic level, making sure that, you know, any incentives that can be provided to commercial developers are provided. But ultimately, you know, not approving this would leave them with less of an option when it comes to attracting commercial developers to the site because of the significant challenges when it comes to infrastructure and no new residents.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Do you all have any questions?
I don't necessarily have questions, more so comments.
Okay.
So I don't know if anybody has any questions for the gentlemen who are standing. Do you have any questions? Thank you. So I was the commissioner that served when we did rezone this to PVCs. Because I wear that hat, I also wear a hat from being in the development space of affordable multifamily housing, having applied for tax credits for a nonprofit entity. And I know that is a competitive and difficult process, and there is a lot of attraction to support this development and looking at infusing that corridor with something new. Just like the epicenter helped to breathe significant life into the possibilities of Riverside Parkway and the activities by bringing in state-of-the-art investment. There is some catalytic impact from having something new. But this new falls far short, far short. And I think that John's recommendation goes to the heart of the action that this board took, was for there to be a unified development plan. If this plan does not consider the entire property, it is not a unified development plan. It just isn't. There was a speaker that spoke to a comparable development that looked to the varying uses of residential and commercial intended, and unfortunately, the way that this is presented follows similarly. And it's very difficult looking at the income levels that the prospective development would target, that those income levels would attract the type of development that the community has continued to express interest in. As you know quite acutely, that when you're trying to attract commercial developers, the number one interest is going to be what is AMI, not what is disposable income. And as the commissioner for this area, I've shared multiple times, I certainly would like to consider new development and new affordable development, but it's got to replace what's there, can't just continue to layer on those conditions because over and over again, it's been the burden of this part of the county. The more that you continue to build development that is targeted to a lower AMI, the further you get from actualizing the commercial development that it takes to create a complete community, because low AMI does not attract the commercial that helps to provide the neighborhood that anybody of any income level would desire. So part of the possibility that is being undermined with this is the potential to bring in that complementary retail that would finally help to create that complete community that this community has been desiring and has been greatly and sorely in need of. And so, you know, I sit here torn, but not so much. Yes, it'd be nice to have that nice courtyard, but, you know, a courtyard versus a grocery store versus a bank, I mean, I can't necessarily see the way that this is being, fight at attracting that. Now, with low-income housing tax credits, you can have a mix of market rate properties, you can have a mix of 80%, 120%, you can have all kinds of mixes of AMI, but I think if you continue to just target the lower scale of that income bracket, it's almost like you're just reinforcing an inevitability to what already is. And I think there's an attraction to being able to provide that mix. Bringing, you know, stable-type housing where people can own, you know, where's the mix of townhome, as was shared in a prior development of single-family homes that can finally help to stabilize what is being provided on this segment of Riverside Parkway? So I, you know, I'm fully in support of staff's recommendation to hold this until the applicant can bring forth what they said they would bring forth, which is that unified development plan, and this is not, this is not that. I appreciate the consideration for the tax, I really do. It's almost really attractive to support, but it's not attractive enough.
I agree, and I too was on the board when this, the bond came in and when the zoning came in, and as Commissioner Sheffield mentioned, what guarantee is it, if we do this part now, what guarantee is it that the commercial will come? And it hasn't so far, but I think we need to stick with the original zoning of a total unified development plan for the whole entire acreage.
Since we're all providing our commentary on this one, yeah, certainly, there are things to consider here with the timing, but first and foremost, it's going to be what was the vision for this area when the original zoning was intended? And I know I've been on my soapbox about concentrated poverty as well and the concerns that I have about that. I agree, having the mixed income, mixed use, the different options for homeownership creates a more viable community, especially given with this flexibility of the zoning, you can have integrated uses. It would have been nice to see more consideration, although I do understand the difficulty in the market with trying to recruit and create that presentation, but that's the job. That's the job.
Thank you. Thank you all for weighing in, and Madam Chair for sharing some background on this property when you served as District Commissioner, I appreciate it, and also Commissioner Burrell. But there is a reason in 2015 that the Board of Commissioners voted to zone this as a PVC. To the community, thank you for your participation in today's zoning hearing and for your engagement as it relates to the redevelopment of the Magnolia property. Thank you for attending the community meetings over the years, for your emails, and for your unwavering commitment and support for our community. Your thoughts, concerns, ideas, and feedback will always be taken into consideration as we chart a path forward for the redevelopment of Magnolia Crossing. I would be remiss not to acknowledge Ms. Wanda Cunningham. Ms. Cunningham passed last year, but I know she's here with us in spirit. She served on the Cobb County Housing Authority and was a strong advocate for the multi-use development of Magnolia. To the applicant, to the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority, the redevelopment of Magnolia Crossing has been one that the community has been patiently waiting for, for six years. There were town halls to solicit feedback from residents on their critical needs and their desires for the redevelopment. Some of those needs include not just attainable housing, but a medical facility, a supermarket, a farmer's market, a grocery store, and a bank. And while I understand there is a desire to build attainable and affordable housing, there is a number of single-family residents in the community, which was highlighted in remarks earlier, that should also have the benefit of utilizing the amenities on this property. The request before the Board today is to remove the stipulation to bring forth a unified plan for development, and the attorney's stipulation reads that an applicant to submit a unified development plan for the entire site to the Board of Commissioners as an other business item. That's the request, as written on the application before us. But based on his letter of August 18th, his interpretation of that stipulation is that one applicant would be required to build and finance three fundamentally different projects. I don't think that that was the intent of the Board. The intent is to bring forth a unified development. So whether it's one developer, two, or three, the goal is to bring forth a unified development plan. I have three areas of concerns with moving forward with this request. Number three, and I'll start from the top down, that there is no guarantee that the Department of Community Affairs would approve the application. I understand in my previous conversations with the applicant and its representative that there is this 99.9% chance that it will be accepted, but I am concerned with that 1.1% that it will not. My second area of concern is the possibility of a piecemeal development. Considering the length of time that it's taken to get to this point, regardless of the reason, whether topography challenges, COVID, increase in the cost of materials, et cetera, without a unified development plan, the community would be left with 470 units on 38 acres of property, with the remainder of the development being undeveloped for an interminant period. There were comments made earlier of a similar development in close proximity to the subject property, where there was a promise of commercial development, while the residents there received a storage unit instead. But my number one reason, my number one reason, and this is what I feel most strongly about, this plan is not what the community was promised. Further, it's not one that the community supports. I am sensitive to and have taken into consideration the challenges that the members of the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority have met over the years regarding the subject property. Currently, we are faced with an increase in construction, labor costs, supply chain delays, and the like. However, I believe that there is an opportunity in every challenge and obstacle. There is an opportunity for developers to collaborate on projects to bring down the cost. There is an opportunity here to be creative and think outside the box and to achieve what the community has been promised. The residents of South Cobb have a greater expectation than that which has been presented today. The residents were promised a better plan, and we expect a better plan. And with that, Madam Chair, I make a motion to deny OB 45.
Thank you, Commissioner. There's a second, is there any additional discussion? Just from the staff, with the denial, they will have to wait 12 months before bringing forward another plan.
Okay. Just no consideration on the "without prejudice" if they do find something sooner?
Denial for months. Withdrawal without prejudice.
Withdrawal, sorry. And John just...
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna talk to what Commissioner Burrell just said, you know, we may want to give the applicant an opportunity to withdraw without prejudice before the Board votes, then they won't have a prejudice period.
Would you be willing to consider that?
Yeah, I'm willing to consider that. Can the applicant approach?
Yes.
So my vote is to deny this application, and there appears to be support from the Board. So you will have the, if it's denied, there will be a 12-month period before you can bring back an application. But if you withdraw without prejudice, you can come back within the next 12 months.
During the 12 months?
I'm sorry, during?
Anytime.
Anytime during the...
Thank you, Commissioner, anytime.
Anytime during the next 12 months.
If I may, I would greatly appreciate the opportunity to withdraw without prejudice. Thank you for that. Thank you.
I appreciate your consideration of that, Commissioner. At the end of the day, we are partners with our Redevelopment Authority, and we're grateful to see you try to put forward something. We did not have the same economic considerations at the time...
I think that we can get something closer to what was envisioned if we give this time. So, thank you, Commissioner. Please, go ahead.
I'd like to amend the motion that OB 45 will be withdrawn without prejudice.
Is there any further discussion? Call the question.
Thank you, Commissioner staff.
The motion passes 4-0. Thank you. Okay, I believe this concludes our zoning hearing for today, just shy of 12:30 PM. Thank you.